All we need to order, we want to be glad in the pledge, and it's political.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I ask you, uh, what goal call please?
Ms. Belair.
Here.
Mr. Burgaram.
Here.
Ms. Derrick.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Here.
Ms. Howard.
Here.
Mr. Lamar.
Here.
Mr. Levinson.
Here.
Ms. Vali.
Here.
Mr. Schreiner.
Here.
Going on to item 2.1, public comment on agenda items. We're gonna get the list, and everyone has 25 minutes. And we'll start, just as soon as we get the list. First on the list is Ava Ryan. Letitia Politt.
I'm speaking on agenda items, roles, and responsibilities processes of the board. This is an item I requested beyond the agenda. When I did, I received an email from a colleague, Ryan Lamar, stating questioning why I would put that on the agenda when we already have this in place. Well, I'm glad you asked, Mr. Lamar. I understand that we are new at this. The majority of this board has only been here a year, or like me, much less. Therefore, it is our responsibility to familiarize ourselves with these procedures. For example, we are a board of nine, not a board of two. Board goals for this school year were created by two. Darren Stridder and Deb LeWright, without any input from the rest of the board or board administration. This is supposed to be a collaborative effort. The board president and vice president do not have power or authority to do this. Policy 2105, school board access to information and reports states a single board member may request certain information and/or reports other than board agenda or committee agenda items. It will take a substantial amount of time to compile, which here she can demonstrate is necessary, and receive that information if the board members' requests has the support of the majority of the board. This policy is not intended to compromise the individual rights of board members, but is intended to facilitate the orderly and efficient functioning of the several administrative offices of the district. Vice President Deb LeWright sends multiple hostile emails a week, sometimes per day, demanding information that would take central office staff away from their responsibilities to compile without a majority of the board consensus. This is a violation of said policy. According to the New York State law, individual board members have no inherent powers by reason of holding office without power to individually authorize action or direct personnel. Yet, Ms. LeWright sent me a list of demands to put on the board's administration committee agenda that I chair. She and Darren Stridder and her president demanded the meeting be held even though committee meetings don't be over the summer. I've held the agenda meeting in good faith and presented the demands as concerns related to me and my colleagues. These demands are basically orders to throw out existing board meeting programs that have been misplaced for our upcoming school year. Our assistant superintendent spatially addressed my concerns, but I could see very clearly by the end of this meeting that the intentions of Ms. LeWright, Mr. Stridder, and Ms. Howard was not planning to discuss our kids, but had been data of their own with no boundaries. They also sent a direct order, Mr. Borgen, who was ordered to interrupt said meeting and dictate my actions. When I refused, the rumors began flying about me and my family. Our board president, Mr. Stridder, following our last meeting on July 18th, went to News Club, lays on us, and told the world that they were commensurators, and our board were at odds making our current sex offender policy more stringent. He said, and I quote, "That our current policy allows them to be hired to be parents or students in the building." These are bold-faced lies. Our current policy does not allow level-three sex offenders to be hired. Any person who works in the school knows this. All hires have to be fingerprinted and background checked before working in our schools in any capacity. Our current policy and procedure in place applies to any sex offender if they attempt to enter any of our buildings when they go through security and have their IDs checked. They are then escorted out of our security and told not to return. The current policy is also the policy given to us by NISPA, the New York State School Boards Association. They divest all the policies out of legal, so that we don't have to at the district level. Mr. Stridder knows this and still shows to lie publicly about it. The board's taking the votes to leak it to our district lawyer to make sure that we are not being convinced we're vulnerable to lawsuits. Mr. Stridder also wrote on Facebook that he has asked for this policy to be revised for years. This is also a lie. He voted in affirmative for this policy in 2017 and has not brought it back to the board since. You can check all of the work that is going back to this time. This is schoolyard bullying at its best, and it tours by far much more. You have to defend the board and everyone standing up here, and they are a district coalition, Mr. President. We are here to make good decisions for the kids in our community. You are not here to tell multiple series of lies that made you look like a hero and put our already vulnerable district in a bad light. You are both not here to be dictators. You want hard and fast, unbreakable rules for our scholars, but all the rules we are governed by are now legal for you, Deb, and Darren. The board education was modeled on professionalism and work together collaboratively, set the tone for the district, and most importantly, need role models for our scholars. I ask the community to be shrewd and discerning, always pay attention to the actions, because the words come misleading. Thank you.
Shawnee Burks.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, um, let's see, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm really trying, I'm really concerned. Um, so, I'm basically in the back of the room, Ms. Politt said, because I've seen the Facebook posts, and I do not understand, I've even seen it on Instagram, why the narrative is out there that sex offenders are allowed on school grounds. When I say all sex offenders are not allowed on school grounds, so I'm putting the narrative out there that during the larger city school district, it's allowed, it's allowed sex offenders on the ground. I think that's, um, in a way, very shameful for the president to put on his speech. Also, um, about a week ago, this is from the president's speech, and the vice president was commenting on his speech concerning the meeting that we had two weeks ago, the school board meeting, and the president's brother called out Mr. Howard and said, "I would like to come to the board meeting. If I come to the board meeting, they're gonna have to call the cops." How is it that you, as the president that sit on the board of our school district, allow your brothers to make such a comment like that on Facebook and not even address it? You don't plead it, you don't do anything. Also, Ms. Belair commented that she asked two of the community leaders, Ray Harvey and another person, and we both didn't get back to you guys. I did get back to you at the last board meeting, and I said, "If you want to know what's going on in the community, come to the community." New York night out just happened. I didn't see you guys there. I didn't see Superintendent there. I didn't see Ray Harvey there. I didn't see Mr. Howard there. I didn't see you guys there. But if you guys want to know what's going on in the community, the only way to know how is to come down to the community, where it's almost about 45% that takes up your district, so you can figure out what's going on in the community, so you can understand why the homework policy, the grade level policy, and the sports policy will affect our kids in the future in the coming years. And that's it. Have a good night.
Darren, Mr. Stridder.
I have to address those comments by Ms. Politt. Policy 5450.1 clearly states in the special circumstances that the sex offender could be a registered student, a participant, or an employee of the district. If you've read the policy, that's what it states. How is that not allowing, with this authorization of the parole officer and the superintendent, how is that not allowing a sex offender on school property? Yes, they have to be fingerprinted. Yes, they have to go through a system. But they are allowed, under the current special circumstance, to be on school grounds. The state law, if this special circumstance is removed, would not allow them on school grounds other than after a certain period of time, I believe it's 7:00 PM to vote. As far as my brother posting on Facebook, anybody knows my brother. I don't tell them what they do. There's nothing that prevents me from commenting about it, but I'm not gonna comment about it. I don't go back and forth on Facebook. As far as me defending the board and dictating anything about the committees and this, uh, board goals, I asked at a public meeting for everyone here to supply the board goals. Everyone here. In public. You can go back to the video, and that part is probably not edited. So you can see for yourself, I asked for everybody to supply the board goals. Only one person did. And it was Deb LeWright. I can't control what you write to the board. I can't control any of that. And so tonight, the board goals are presented for your approval. It's been a month since I asked for those board goals. Could have submitted anything in writing, but you didn't. And as far as you calling me out publicly, you could have just lifted the phone, written an email, but instead, you do it publicly. And that is the thing. Would anyone else like to speak?
Yes, I would.
On agenda items, Mr. Phil Howard, so, just two questions.
You just said that you asked a month ago. Did you send out follow-up, still request? I've been on the board for 11 years, and board goals have never been submitted with the inclusion of just one person. It's usually done in an achieve or in a workshop environment, where we all collaborate. We all try to decide what we want to be our annual goals for the year. Also, I want to go back to the level three discussion, because you intubate something that aren't necessarily true, and I'm gonna need to twist words a little bit. So I think we should take this opportunity to ask our superintendent, quite candidly, at the camera, could you please tell me, give me an example of how this will come into play? The allowing of individuals who are level-three sex offenders. Can you talk to that? Can you speak to that? Would it be a situation where we hire level-three sex offenders, or would we allow level-three sex offenders to be on our premises? And can you speak to what that looks like, how that would happen, if it would ever happen?
So what I'll say is that if you're in a policy conversation, we will provide a response.
Okay, I'll go with that. And, uh, to post on your Facebook page, Mr. Stridder, that seven people voted down that policy at the last meeting was not true. Actually, it was tabled.
I didn't say.
Well, someone said it on the screen, and you did not correct it. You did not correct it, so you allowed that false information to be out. And it basically lied on the seven members on this board, who the person actually named. All seven members voted, excuse me, all seven members and the superintendent voted this down, which is deceptive, is misleading, and is basically a lie. You had ample opportunity to correct that error. You did not. And then you say that you voted down, and actually, it was tabled so that we can get more information, so that we can understand the law, so that we can understand what the part of being exiled, what the liability would be to the district. And I hope at some point tonight, Mr. Short would speak to that, can speak to the idea of this being a NISPA, uh, policy, and talk about the bed that has done up top, where these policies are sit to the school boards, so that people understand, all we want is more information. We didn't want a table. We didn't want to allow rapists in front of our kids. We didn't want to allow level-three sex offenders in our buildings. We wanted to understand the law. But that's not what was portrayed on the social media now. And I think it was very responsible. And one last thing, even when you say, "I'm speaking as a citizen," Mr. President, everybody knows who you are, and they assume that you're speaking from a point of truth. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Mr. Levinson.
Thank you, Mr. Levinson. So I'm gonna say my comments on policies till that section when we go through them. But I just want to make one statement that's quite amazed me over the years. Employees get fingerprinted, and athletes go through a process, they get approved, come into a building. Parents go through a rapid system, and they're checked. The only people that enter the school room that are not checked are the board members of this district. I know seven of these people. But that always amazes me, in the ten years that I've been on and off the board, that board members do not go through any of these processes. I just want people to understand that. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on agenda items? Is there any agenda item you'd speak on?
Hi, I'm Victoria Boucher. Two things, or three things, actually. I'm gonna speak on a sex offender policy. I think from a public standpoint, it was more viewed as, why would you want more information instead of saying, "We don't want a sex offender in the school." I think a lot of the public doesn't understand the legality behind that. So I think when you're talking about these things, you have to be a little more detail-oriented in what you're actually stating as to why you're tabling it or what's owed and so forth. Because I think a lot of people looked at that and said, "All these people want sex offenders in our school." So what's the point? Sometimes you kind of, I think that you're doing your diligence to get all the facts, and I understand that. But I think some of those policies have to be more hebron and stronger. I mean, if you were to tell me that my son and my daughter are gonna be possibly allowed to be around a level-three sex offender, that's where it comes to me. I accept my child to go to school and be safe. I accept my child to go to school and be respected. I accept my child to go to school and be treated as equally as everybody around me. And with that being said, the 55 grading policy, I'm just gonna say that we should want more for our children. You should not ever, as a parent, say, "Give him a 55 and let him," and just do it that way. To me, that's crazy. Saying that I'm just gonna give him the score, and he don't have to earn it. I'm 34 years old. I went to NSA. I played a sport. We had standards, and they had to be met or we were benched. I myself was in my middle class, and I didn't play my junior and senior year, and that was my consequence. So the fact that these kids are being told and taught that it's okay to not do the best that they can do, you're doing a disservice to them. And again, I don't know the history of these policies or how they're made or how they're stated. But again, you need to want more for your children. I need to want more for my child. I'm 34, and I'm 70. I make my kid a computer right, hoping even on Sunday, they're doing anything good. If they walk across that field, they should be able to read, write, and do the basic necessities to go on to the next level. We should want all our children to go to college or go into technical careers. To get a driver's license, you need to be able to read, you need to be able to write. And the fact that you're lowering the standard is kind of a slap in the face. And my last comment is that you clearly will have to deal with each other. And I think for the sake of our kids, we need to figure it out. And you need to grow up, and you need to put your head stuff to the side and do what's best for the kids. It doesn't matter if you guys are fighting all the time, and doing two hours of detective study because you want to grade, when two, three, four months ago, everyone agreed. It's weird. And it doesn't look good to the public. You guys fighting all the time, coming at each other all the time. I've heard comments about Darren. I've heard about Debbie. I've been hearing about Letitia, about everybody. You need to come together. That's your job. And I understand you're not gay. But the future of this district and the kids in this community are on you guys, because you make the rules. It's not, it's not a good look. If there's any kind of discreditation, it's the way you guys act towards each other. And we see that, and it's talked about. That's why there's Facebook posts. There's why there's things that are said. And you want to sit at this table, you're like the leaders of this district, and you're embarrassing. I don't care who you are. Everything deserves an education. Everything is equal between people. Everything deserves everything. But if you're failing, and you're playing football, what would this act do after 12th grade? Right? It's a valid question. And the way that things are spun, it goes one way or the other way. And you guys are supposed to come together. That's why you were all elected to this board. The public and the community want you to do what's best for our kids. But of all the stuff in between, you're not getting to a real problem. You're not. And digging out people, and pulling people names, and saying this and saying that makes you all look a fool. Because why would I trust you when you guys can't trust each other? That's it. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak on agenda items? Okay, we'll move to non-agenda items. Mr. Ray Harvey.
Um, good afternoon. Superintendent, board members, president. You know, I'm saying that I'm listening to people speak, right? And one of my favorite things to say is, make it make sense. And we need to make sure we do that, right, on all levels. Like, uh, speaking of brother, when, when, and this is who I am, when, when, and you can take it however you want to take it. I'm a big, I'm a big guy. I can handle that. It seems to me that when people look like me shows up, the police is called. But I get threats on Facebook, "Where's the police?" Right? And that's when the board president, bro, that none of us, not that I know of, threatened anyone. And the police was here because we didn't feel, we feel threat. Well, when you make a threat over the internet, we should take that serious too. Because if I call into the school and I make a threat, you take it serious. So, so when, when, when someone is making a threat to people that 85, 90% of the community is, is looking like, we should take that serious, right? And to, 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 when, when we was running, and I was one of the one that was running, a lot of stuff came at me. People were saying I shouldn't run because I'm the president of the NAACP. It was false narrative you put out about me, because that's not true. If you want to know something about the NAACP, join, and then we can talk. Or come see me at a general meeting that we hold if you want to know the policies. It's the same thing. You got policies. As one of the board members was speaking tonight, read your policies. Know what you're doing, right? Know. Same thing with sex offenders. That's a legal thing to me. I don't care how you twist it. Legal have to tell you what to do. Nobody else can tell you what to do. That's just, that's why we hide these laws, so that they can tell us what we're doing, how we're doing it, and what we're supposed to do. Not me or anyone else saying, "Well, we shouldn't do that." And, and, and to be honest, you, you're right, we shouldn't do it, but if it's legally that if we don't do it, we can get sued for not doing it, then we have to come, come to terms on how to make sure that if, if, if a sex offender is on these grounds, that they are escorted by our security or police or however you want it to be, right? Because, again, it's protecting the kids, the school, and everybody else, right? Because if that's legal, then that's what we gotta do, right? And, and, and further adds, we should all be here for the good of our kids, nothing else. We, we, we should put personal feelings aside, which sometimes people have a hard time doing, and I don't. I don't have to like you, but I have to respect you. Because when I go home, you don't come to my house. So I don't have to like you, but I'm gonna respect you. And that's the way we should approach each other, right? The respect that everybody should receive and should give, right? And that's not what's happening right now. And I think some of that was from Puddin'. Everybody was so upset about Puddin'. It's done. Let it go, please. Let it go. Let it go. Again, that's why we have laws. Nobody did anything about that without lawyers sitting down, wasn't involved. So if you have a problem, talk to the laws on both sides, right? Because that's who told us what we could and could not do, right? And for us, things, things get tabled all the time. It, it means that we need to know more about when somebody said table or something. So that's not pretty games, you know, and say, "Well, they wanted to vote." No, that ain't, that ain't what that meant by table. You know, some of us do have a little bit more, uh, trouble when, when, when we hear something like that. So yeah, please, I beg you, work for your kids, not for yourself, but for our kids. Thank you.
Shawnee Burks.
Hello again, everyone. So I'll be speaking publicly about managing items, but if you want to get technically all kind of coincide and come into one. So I would actually like to briefly, young lady, sit in back there, we came up this school. The prejudice is getting out of hand, and it definitely could for the district. I've seen the comments also, and as a vice president of the Newark Parent Alliance, I had to call an emergency meeting that night, because if you guys got feelings, and your family allows comment on these posts and on these false statements, if you think you don't have feelings and that we can't post, and it was very tense, because I posted it, and then for some reason, it deleted. I said, "Okay, God, you must don't want me to post." And I took it in my mind, I'm supposed to be the different person, and called an emergency meeting for the Newark Parent Alliance. And we made an appointment to say that we will not respond on Facebook to these antics. Some of us did, but as a vice president, I said, "No, we're not responding to these antics on Facebook, because it only makes us look more divided, and it only adds fuel to the fire." If I can do that as a non-board member, why couldn't the president do it? Why couldn't the vice president do it? We all have our differences. We all have our issues, but on the outside, you should be able to coincide. I've been to plenty of community events where I've seen board members who policies, who vote on policies I don't agree with. They say hello to me, hello to you, and they say hello to my child. You would never know that we disagree on some type of political level, because I make sure I hold myself to the standard to teach my son that you have to respect everybody regardless of how they feel with their political views. Another thing, I'm sick and tired of the narrative that when we, as a people, and as a woman, as a black woman, when I speak up or when I stand up against something that I feel is wrong, I'm loud, I'm threatening, I'm causing a riot. If you guys want to see a riot, look what happened on Sunday in Montgomery, Alabama. That's a riot. That was not started by my people. I'm sick of that narrative, because it's just, that's just known that we cannot step up and say anything or defend our children. I was told by my son's advocate that if I continue to come to school board meetings, that she would not represent my son, because I'm violently aggressive in the meeting. Well, if that's the way you feel, then you don't need to, um, you don't need to represent my son, because you feel that way about me. I can imagine what you're thinking about my son and his hand. Because unfortunately, to the world, justice isn't the little boy that like power, he's a threat, because he's... Because he's black and he's an eight-year-old, built-in structure, young man. So you can say whatever you want, but that's how he's viewed as a brother. So let's get rid of that narrative. If there's an issue and you don't feel comfortable, we can pull each other to the side and talk about it. Having a conference call and having armed policemen at a meeting that my son attends every Tuesday, he's not now because he's at basketball getting into something, he's at football getting into something. But to have armed guards at that meeting that my son attended, I didn't, I didn't feel comfortable. And the guards didn't feel comfortable because they came to me afterwards and said, I'm sorry. I don't know, just so they feel like we are here doing harm to them. Y'all gotta do better as a board. Whether y'all agree or not, agree or disagree, get over it, make better decisions for our children and for our staff. That's it.
Would anyone else like to speak on non-agenda items? Mr. Walker?
Yes, excuse my appearance, my lateness, but I'm, I'm not a villain. But I had to listen, I was listening to broadcasts, and there are some things that I have to be made straight right now. We're gonna have a successful school year. The first is that they follow at least the tips for new school board members that have been printed out for the last year. They are not being followed, alright? They are not being followed. This is becoming a us versus them mentality. This is becoming something that does not deal with the school as a whole, our scholars as a whole, but individual agendas. The last meeting I went to, one of the board members said that he, she could be home drinking margaritas instead of being in that seat. Then why was that person even there? What do they have to prove if they're not supposed to be hitting others and serving to all the kids in this district? All of them. The condescension, the elitism, although as shaky as it was, was such. That made me wonder, why are you here and what did you do in education before you, when children, if you even had the privilege of having them in front of your classroom? I wondered if you didn't bully them or disregard them because of the way they looked or because they didn't look like you or whatever, or maybe even worse, because they appeased your ego. Mrs. Tisha, you were exactly right when you said that we need to pay attention to what the words that are being said and what's not being done. No one in this district has a priority over anyone else. There's a lot of shaky stuff going on in here, and pay attention to the language. When, when you hear them start talking about or suggesting my constituency, that's their group. They're not talking about our kids as a whole. The idea that some people want to throw out this new reading agenda, after the people came here and explained it, it has been, um, supported by a number of real educators as well, as well as the NAACP. It makes me wonder, well, is there agenda that I'm wanting to come to this, to support this? This is the beginning of a school year. I would not have gotten out of my bed to come here to say this, except that watch and listen. Please pay attention to what is being said and what is being done. I don't understand how someone like, um, a certain board member who's been on this board for years, in one of the most crucial, uh, areas, most crucial curriculum areas, I'm sorry, policy areas, gets kicked off, gets pushed someplace else, told to go to some business, and someone has absolutely no experience gets to try to burn the show. Uh-uh. Uh-uh. Listen, be prepared, be organized, because this district, and I taught forty-one years, is supposed to serve all children. And I'm frankly very upset that there seems to be an agenda that's going in another direction. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on non-agenda items? Say your name, please.
Um, Megan Zouzian?
Okay, how are you?
Alright, so, um, I think I'm gonna echo a lot of what some people have already said, and maybe some people may echo, whatever. Um, so I'm a graduate of Newark Schools along with the life hall president of the area. And I really wanted to address everyone sitting here today that I'm so disappointed in like the actions and treatment of some of you sitting right in front of me. The hate it appears that some of you hold for the board president should be something that the public should be able to pick up on. You're a group of mine that needs to work collaboratively as a unit. Discourse is one hundred percent necessary and will happen, but it should be able to happen respectfully, and it's currently not. The president's been on the board for years, and as far as I've been able to see, which might be contrary to what some people have said, has not been disrespectful personally to anyone. Individually, you all hold your own opinions on the way things are run or not run, and you're able or should be able to be vocal on whatever platform you desire of the changes that you want to happen. However, when personal attacks happen, which has happened now at the last few meetings, there needs to be a line drawn. I've heard the board president called a liar because he's been vocal about what happened to his child on the bus. Are we also calling the other parents who have gotten up here at this podium and told the public what has happened to their child on the bus a liar? I don't think so. You just dislike him so much, and he can tell you that the sky is blue, and you argue for our own sake? I've heard he has a conflict of interest because of lawsuit regarding what happened to his other son a few years ago. First hand, I remember seeing publicly that he released information on that lawsuit when he first filed it and then described what and why he was doing it. So I'd like to say that first, that happened. Second, if it was a conflict of interest, I believe the lawyer would tell us that it was. And I, you know, bet money on the fact that if any parent had something happen to their child where the only recourse for accountability was a lawsuit, that he'd sue as well. It's been appalling to see how disgusting some people have gotten when they believe that they don't hold power anymore. You're all equals. Change is not bad. In the case of the school district, I'd argue that change is needed. When the same group of people have stacked into the same positions for years on end and the graduation rate or literacy has not improved, then I implore the public to acknowledge the fact that change is absolutely necessary. As a taxpayer and someone who deeply cares about the community, it's sad to see that some people are unwilling to work with others and that they just want to argue. I could go on and on about what professional behavior should and shouldn't look like, but I think I made my point here on that. And I implore everyone at this table to look inward and acknowledge where you can and do, you can be and do better because it's much needed. I also want to make a note about some of the policies that came up last meeting. Um, when I was in high school from two thousand nine to two thousand, uh, twelve, our policy first worked was that you have to hold at least a sixty-five percent rate in all classes, and you have to have at least ninety percent attendance. And I actually checked the school report card from the year I graduated, and that seemed to have worked because we had a ninety-four percent attendance rate. Um, this policy at the time was told, all of our coaches came to us and told us what we needed to do to be able to participate in sports, which then forced the athletes into making school the number one priority so that they could do what they could do and be a participant in sports. This then allowed anyone who desired to play in college the opportunity to meet both the sports and the activities that are required to be successful. We need to expect better from our children so they can expect better from themselves. I again implore all of you to put aside your own animosity and really think about what will serve students in the long run beyond the years of their high school. We shouldn't just want them to catch, we should want them to thrive. This means that they have to be able to read and write, among many other things that they, that they should be learning when they're in school. We should want them to be knowledgeable and able to learn so that they can choose to do whatever they want when they leave the borough district. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on non-agenda items? Say your name, please.
Hi, my name's Melissa Lamar, and I'm a teacher for twenty years in the Newark North City School District. So I am an actual educator. However, tonight, I'm speaking from my own viewpoint to not represent my union or the teachers in this district. And I'm just gonna give you a little bit of my events, if you'll let me. What I see, and what I've seen, is a shift in the lenses. What we had since our last leadership was one lens applied for a very long time to education. And the reason I so support new people on this school board and having more voices at the table is because you're not going to get the truths without multiple lenses. Everyone has their own version of it. People said, oh, let's not get personal, and yet everybody that I've heard has gotten a little bit personal tonight. And so I'm gonna try not to do that. I'm gonna say that I've spoken to teachers since this new board has come in. And the first night, there was very hope in this district because it was in the beginning. And since then, it's been on a decline. I've had friends who have sent me, should I even work in the ready anymore? Should we be looking for new work? Do they understand what we're going to need to open the schools in September? In regard to the reading program, I will tell you this, I have one serious agenda. I want all the kids in Newark to read. I'm a first grade teacher, I'm very passionate about it. You can look at my data, and you can see the readings that I have offered to you. And we do have some lenses to apply to that, but unfortunately, we haven't been heard. And that's why there's a lot that's going on in the district. The teachers need a seat at the table too. The teachers need a contract. The teachers need to be accepted too. And under our last leadership, the truth is that just was not happening. The evidence is there in newspapers, the evidence is there in our daily lives. So, um, I'm a little bit nervous because back in the mid-street, it's intimidating to come here and speak to all of you. And I'm just letting you know that the more opportunity you open for those lenses, there are good people. We aren't all out here having wars with one another. We really aren't. We're just normal people trying to get the job done. So, and I don't need that of any one of you either. I mean, people, they put them to places and make their own side and make their own lens, and they don't know how to come together. So it all needs mediation, and we need some more leadership. I still believe you can have a leader. I don't do that, as Mr. Iron says, at all times, but I do think he speaks the truth. For the most part, from what I understand and what I've heard, and I, that I compare with the others too, but they can't continue to be like this. It can't be somebody coming to obviously make a speech that's aimed at doing something else because somebody's mad at somebody else, it's got to stop. I'm gonna start September with my goal for the first graders. I'm gonna teach them how to teach, how to read for you, and I'm gonna do my best. But we need support too. And when we're telling the truths to our classroom, we need just an opportunity to be heard. So some of, some of that comes from there. And as I said, I only represent myself. I, I cannot, I don't want any of my colleagues to feel responsible for this. I don't want to end up in meetings. I still can't afford it and end up in meetings that I've heard, you know, disciplinary, I hope other stuff happens tonight, but I'm just gonna sit here and continue to not speak. I have a husband that's on the school board, obviously. I sent him here so that I could help with this recovery. Please just get back to that. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak on non-agenda items? Okay. For item four point one, executive session. Be resolved with the board of education hereby recessed into the executive session for the following purpose. Not a, not a confidential, not a perp, employment history of particular individuals, matters leading to the employment of particular individuals, review of programs, placement of students with disabilities, let the bargain under the tail of law, MTA, NSTA, CSE, and rotating advice from legal channels. Do we have a motion and a sentence?
Don't vote.
Second. Don't vote.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Lamar?
Yes.
Ms. Levinson?
Yes.
Ms. Polatti?
Yes.
Ms. Tradeiron?
Yes.
Ms. Lye?
Yes.
Ms. Robbatty?
Yes.
Ms. DeRae?
We have an empty box in one hour.
That mean two.
No, I didn't want to say that.
No, no.
It's a happy birthday.
Yeah, yeah, we get out of here. We keep working on one.
I'm sorry.
What did I tell you?
Yes, you did, you did. I cannot speak, I would not speak on it anymore.
Where is section of the agenda five point one, super tenet update? My command here.
Thank you. Good evening, thank you for those of you who have taken time during the evening to engage in our community in this meaningful way. I would like to reiterate something I shared with the community when questions arose about certain district policies. For clarity, many of our district policies are adapted from those provided by New York State. Those policies are legally sound and are provided as a template for our district to use to support our scholars and employees while remaining systemally responsible to our taxpayers. From my lens as a parent, I may not like the policy that is in place. However, as the educational leader in the district, it is my responsibility to present policies for review that are in compliance with the law and take into consideration all of our students, families, employees, and taxpayers. As mentioned before, they are capable of legal review and provided by the state for all school districts to use. Therefore, it is unfair to have our district negatively highlighted for utilizing the PISA system practices as our peers. It saddens me that despite knowing this, some of us on the board of education are leading the way to more backward publicity for our district. A lot of work has been done behind the scenes to undermine my authority as well as my team. Our scholars and the community look to us for unified decision-making, so I agree with some folks who are still in the audience who made that statement. However, there is a clear division between us. Even our seniority at these board meetings was adjusted by the board president, which unfortunately further emphasizes the divide. Newer changes were also requested at the organizational meeting by the board leadership without any collaboration with myself or my team. There was no reason for how these requests may hinder the work done dearly by our staff, faculty, and in turn negatively impact our students.
by our staff, faculty, and in turn negatively impact our students. Change is not a bad thing, but it needs to be implemented in an efficient and respectful manner that has improved outcomes for our students as a focal point. Fittingly, I would like to reiterate my request for more information regarding proposed committees by two members of our Board of Education. It is difficult to participate in proposed committees when no purpose, rationale, or needed logistics have been provided. There is a clear desire for members of our community to become involved, but without having a basic schedule or understanding, it is difficult to move from philosophical to action. I wish you and the collective board to assist me with developing a student-centered superintendent and Board of Education relationship. The first rules of the 2023-2024 school year have been very discouraging from the perspective of my secondary team, and we look forward to a much improved relationship with the collective Board of Education for the remainder of the school year, sorry. And in the process of planning a retreat for board members who would like to collaboratively move forward to explore their roles and how those roles play an important part in moving our district forward. I understand there is resistance by some of our members. However, please be reminded that the team only functions when there is a full participation and collaboration by all members, so I hope all will decide to attend. I hope to share that date with you next week. We are experiencing low morale, high turnover, turnover, excuse me, and the inability to attract quality candidates because we are attacked consistently by some members of this board. Media reports including social media posts by the president have been baseless and do not represent our district in any way. Even with these distractions, I know the priority of the district's educational leadership teams will continue to be working towards the greatest outcome for all of our students. As the new school year approaches, we must remain focused on who and what our purpose truly is for, and that is simply every go back every day. This concludes my update for this evening. Thank you.
And Campbell, move on to the collective board item 6.1 of approval minutes for the July 18, 2023 meeting. Can I have a...
Thank you, Board President. I have the approval minutes on July 18, 2023. I have a meeting.
Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Second.
Discussion on changes is... Go, go, please.
Ms. Robberty?
Yes.
Ms. DeRide?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Lamar?
Yes.
Ms. Levinson?
Yes.
Ms. Polatti?
Yes.
Ms. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Lyte?
Yes.
That concludes my item 4.
Thank you, Madam President. Move on to item 7.1. Board President, resolution to adopt policy on the second reading, policy 5201, secondary course credit. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Don't vote.
Second. All right, good. Turn this over to Policy Chair, Ms. Polatti.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to explain each one. Thank you for putting it up. So the first one is 5201. And let me say before we start that these have been reviewed by our terms. So this first one was reviewed by a large team of people, including frontline workers like teachers, in a process that's called shared decision-making. And this was done last school year. Their proposed changes were not put before the last board for discussion and voting, but are here as a second read tonight. So the first four, I know this is hard to read, but the first four which... Thank you. Which are number one, are number two, and are number three are agreed to between the cabinet and the policy committee. Four, number, go down. Yep, number four is the main item of discussion the last time that we met. So one of the, and that regards to a rule that's called the 55 rule. One of the objections that was voiced at the last meeting to changing this from four quarters where a student would earn a 55 on a report card even if they never came to school was the idea that there were no safeguards in place if this was to change from four quarters to less than four quarters. We learned firsthand at the end of the last meeting by an NFA principal that there are indeed numerous interventions already in place and that have been in place for quite a while to support the student learning. While it might be believed or wanted that more interventions are helpful, we are assured that the current interventions even include daily communications with students and their parents. So for this policy committee, along with the superintendent, we agreed at the last meeting that the 55 rule can be changed to raise the grade to a 55 in two quarters of a four-quarter class if that student has 85% attendance in those quarters. And for a two-quarter class, a semester class, one quarter could be raised to the 55 if the student has 85% attendance for that quarter. So for a four-quarter class, that 55, those two 55s would be raised the first two quarters that a student falls below 55. And for a two-quarter or one semester class, that 55 would be raised to a 55 on the first quarter that that student would fall below that 55 and let that attendance mark. Now, although that I said that, I believe that the district was in agreement of this change. They may not be at this moment in time. I was told that there was a survey that was done at various schools to explain and determine what they do to compare it to us. So before I turn the microphone back to Mr. Schreider to take comments and to take a vote, I need to explain with clarity the difference between a policy and a practice. Newburgh has this policy, which as is, requires teachers to manually override in a computer system an earned grade up to a 55 even if that grade is zero because the student never attends. If the teacher refuses to alter that grade, it could be subject to disciplinary action. That's a policy. That's what Newburgh has. I did my own policy committee survey, and in the seven schools that I researched, not one of them has a policy like this. Some had practices where it suggested that a grade be not below 50 for one quarter or two. Some had no practice at all. You earn whatever you earn. One actually had a practice that they rolled back at their last board meeting because there's no longer a need for these COVID protections. And one school has a policy whereby if a student misses 20 days or more in an entire year of a class, they need to deny the credits for that class. So those seven districts that I surveyed were Middletown, Pine Bush, Monrobit Bay, Valley Central, Washingtonville, Pete's Hill, and Schenectady, who was always compared to us on state tests. Mr. President, can I give you back the floor for comments and voting?
Thank you, Ms. Billy. Any questions or comments from the board members? Dr. Mann, here.
I have Dr. Carol spin a little bit to one, Ms. Polatti. I believe you just have to give a little bit more explanation. Thank you. In preparation for this item, we requested that our OSCEs conduct a survey of all our component districts. Unfortunately, this line has not been able to compile that material as of this date. However, we did contact component districts as well as one or two other districts who are not within our OSCEs. Cornwall, students receive the earned grade. Albany gives the grade 55. Catsfield, 55. In the District of Florida, quarters one and two are a 50. Quarters three and four are the actual grade, and the average, final grade is an average of all four quarters. In Highland, quarters one and two are a 50. Quarters three and four are an actual, and the final grade is an average. In Hudson, 55. Middletown, 55. Menacing, earned grade. Port Jervis, first quarter 55, all others actual. Poughkeepsie, 55. Roundup Valley, first, second, and third quarter 50, fourth, actual. Final is the actual average. Valley Central, 50. Forward, first quarter 55, all others actual. And in Tuxedo, the earned grade. As soon as we receive the information from this line, from all of our component districts, I will provide that to the superintendent for your information. Thank you.
Ms. Peterson.
I just also want to clarify in the student management system that teachers do not manually override grades. They have a grade book. There's a script one that brings it to it, so not manually overriding the 55. I also just wanted to also make, and it's something that I also said in policy committee, currently, Newburgh has over 2,000 courses, 62,000, that this policy will impact. The timing of this is, as the person in charge of the student management system and ensuring the proper calculation of grades, I just want to state that there is going to need, whatever the board chooses, I, as a student, information person, is going to, I'm going to need time to get the script right on the back end and the core setup. Seeing that we're about maybe three weeks out from school right now, this would be a big feat if this was changed now. So I just want to make the board aware of that.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Mr. Levinson, Mr. Howard.
So before I just get into this policy, and I'm asking, this may be for Mr. Forget more than Ms. Polatti. These policies have changes on it. We have red text. We have red text with a line through it. We have red text that's highlighted. We have red text that's highlighted with a struck through line, and we have green text. What are all of these things? Do they add on, are they just abstractions?
Mr. Ford.
Thank you. Mr. Levinson, so as Ms. Polatti shared, the shared decision-making team, there are representatives for each of the bargaining units that participate in a policy review as recommended by the president of each of the bargaining units. This happens to be one of the Newburgh Teachers Association policies that they'd wanted reviewed. So they put representatives on the team. Administration was on the team. Central Office was on the team, as well as CSJA. What you see in red are the recommendations from that particular team. The recommendations to the superintendent. The superintendent then takes them as guidance to make a final recommendation that would go to the policy committee. So when you see these changes, the red are the changes that resulted from the shared decision-making team. The strikeouts in black are the policy committee. And when you combine them together, it's the collective conversation that the board has to have at this point. When you look at item number four, we worked pretty hard to get that 55 for all four marking periods. The one piece that I do believe in is the addition of the 85% attendance rate onto that. Because I believe students have to be there in the presence to learn, and an 85% attendance rate is aligned with our eligibility policy, even though it's lower than the basic absenteeism rate. We're still given some leeway there. I'm okay with the 85% attendance rate. We want students seated to learn, but we also want them to be able to learn with equitable resources. So if I were to consider one minorship, it would be 55 for each marking period. It would be 85%. But the conversation of the committee, and as a team, when you work as a team, you come under the recommendation, the recommendation is for two marking periods at this point. I would love to see this there, of course.
Mr. Howard? Yeah, so, so I'm happy here. So I have what Ms. Polatti said, and so my question to the superintendent, to the deputy superintendent, deputy superintendent who is the A on the policy committee. So a lot of changes here. What are we voting on? What are the recommendations from Central Office, from the superintendent in regards to this policy? Red, the yellow, to black, the line through?
And it's all of that, Mr. Howard. So as Ms. Polatti did share with us, the first item under number one obtained a final category of 65. What we're adding in, Mr. Ziblo, if you could pull that down, please? Thank you. Under the first item, where its quarter become assessments if applicable, that's an add to that. Item number two, we're changing the word participations to work. In item number three, we got a little bit more specific with pre-approved college visits so that it doesn't remove the opportunity for the student to take the test. If they're on a college visit and the test is being administered at that time, it needs to be a mutually agreed upon time upon return that student takes it has the opportunity to order. Those are what we're voting on.
Okay, when you say wait, who are you voting to? The policy committee, Central Office, or the group?
I am saying we are all in agreement with what I've shared with this.
Okay.
So one, two, three, and Ms. Polatti, correct me if I'm wrong. One, two, three, we are in total agree with.
Yes.
Number one, under the following are applicable requirements regarding the secondary school courses. We did agree that we would not use the region's as a final exam grade. We removed that. So we're in agreement with that.
Why so highlighted it?
That was so that we could, that was actually for Ms. Martin and myself to understand what the change was. Highlighted that that was true.
Okay, okay.
So we're in agreement with the one. We're in agreement with the number two. We're in agreement with number three. We're concerned about number four, but we did agree to push this forward. So what do you confirm with number four? And why? Only because I believe it should remain. When we did the equity review, and we applied the equity review to this policy where we need to change that in, I think it was back in 2018, 2019, to where we applied the 55 as an old screen role for marking periods. We felt that was equitable because not all students have the same resources and supports that other students have. Where I think we can come together on this between Dr. Campbell and myself, if we leave it at 55 for all four marking periods, but add the 85% attendance, we would be very comfortable with that. It now states that the recommendation on authority of consideration is for the first two marking periods. We would prefer to see it as all four, but we did it for your consideration, the first two marking periods.
So, Mr. President? If we agreed to changes, except number four, we wanted to remain as is, how do we vote on this? How, can you, I'll adopt this, or is this a solid one policy?
Right now, number four states that it would be exploding two quarters of 55. So if the student has a grade first quarter, they get a 75, 85, they have the amount.
Right, now, my question.
Let's just play this off. If, if the second and third quarters are bad, you know, something happens and they get, you know, bad grade, they can take that 55 as long as they have 85% attendance.
Okay, so my question to you.
If you wanted to change this,
What would we do?
You would have to make a motion to amend number four to whatever you're amending, and then you have to get five votes to amend.
Is that correct, Mr. Trump?
Yes.
Thank you. Then, Mr. Levinson has a question. Go ahead.
Go ahead, okay. So, so I understand the frustration of parents or teachers that their kids that got a 55 that didn't show up or didn't do any work. And I'm amazed that Central Office is agreeing to it, 85% attendance, to bring that up. And my point would be, if we're going from what we are now as 55 for quarters with no attendance requirement to now add an attendance requirement, I think for the fourth quarters might be good because we're really taking a drastic leap going requiring 85%. And, and... And, and I think it should be for four quarters, should be reviewed at the end of the year to, did this work well or not? So, so, given what, what Mr. Howard wants, I think would be a better situation.
Just a little more.
Just a little more of this, Lee. Yeah, I'm just, when was this fifty-five rule as it stands now put in place?
It was prior to pandemic, but I can't do the exact data, have to go back through the notes and modifications and changes. I believe, Ms. Falet correctly, by the law, I believe it went back as far as two thousand eighteen.
And has our graduation rate gone up as a result of it, or has student performance gone up as a result of it?
It's hard to measure that.
Ms. Falet.
So I'd like to know more about, um, this number one, the students will not take the quarterly common assessments. And I'd like to hear from either Dr. Manning Campbell or Mr. Forget or both. Isn't that a benchmark assessment to inform teachers before they get too far and they can't take the regions and they'll fail? So wouldn't that be detrimental?
Are you referring to number one, which refers to the regions exams?
Number one where it says, the students will not take the quarterly common assessments. Aren't common assessments something that teachers use as a formative tool?
Absolutely, and they will be taking the common quarterly assessments in all non-regions classes.
But if we vote on this policy, they would not be taking quarterly assessments?
They would for non-regions courses. I believe number one, as you're reading, is only referring to regions.
Okay, and is that the recommendation by?
We currently do not have regions exams, uh, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I prepare. We do not have common quarterly assessments created for regions courses at this time?
We do have. We do have, uh, quarterly assessments for our regions courses, but our students do not take a fourth quarter common assessment because the regions exam is given.
Can you clarify for me, were teachers involved in the design of those quarterly common assessments?
Yes, they were.
They were?
They were. All quarterly common assessments were prepared by staff members, uh, approximately two years ago, and they were reviewed and analyzed, um, this past year.
Then I would recommend that be considered.
So that would mean that if, if we vote on this, those formative benchmarks would not give our teachers the tools to, to reteach that material or address deficits before they get to the regions, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Howard and Ms. Falet. Thank you, Mr. President. So, taking into account the, uh, the equity questions that Mr. Forget had discussed in regards to the differences that students, that we, we deal with in our student population, also considering the eighty-five percent, I think the eighty-five percent is something that's good. Because what it does, it allows us to know that the kids are in school and they are striving. I, I, I would not want to have this available to children or scholars who just don't, not come to school. That's not what we want to do. That's the narrative that was out, that we want to give kids, no, we don't want to give kids anything. We want them to show that they're in school, that they have an attendance, that's allowing them to possibly get the grades that we want them to get. But if they're not getting those grades and they are, they are in full attendance, we need to address even further. What is the real problem going on here? But I think that gives us an opportunity to, uh, let the scholars know, you must be in school, you must be in school. That being said, I would like to amend the current resolution to include the, number four, the red, the red part that's scratched out. Do I need to read that, Mr. Trump? So I would like to amend the motion, amend the motion to include the lowest grades when students score, call it fifty-five for the first quarter only. If the average is below fifty-five, it will be indicated in an annotated, annotation next to the fifty-five. The teacher will record the actual grades for all times of learning management system. Some of the score in any marking period will reflect the grade no less than fifty-five.
Right, yeah. You just want to.
Correct, I'm sorry, yes, 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 that's my answer.
So the amendment is the actual, instead of having the two quarters fifty-five.
Correct, four quarters, yes, with eighty-five percent attendance requirement.
Mr. Forget. So can I just make one clarification? I, I think what I heard was a request for consideration under number one. The request was in the yellow highlight. It will now read, the students will take the quarterly common assessments. The word "not" will be removed from item number one. And I understand from Mr. Howard's recommendation that on item number four, the change would reflect in yellow, the grade of fifty-five will be applied to all four quarters in which the student's course rate is below the fifty-five. That I believe is what I heard as a requested amendment. Thank you.
The requested amendment is for number four, let's deal with one at a time. Okay, I think it's probably better to do one at a time at this point. Uh, so, the amendment is for number four, to go for four quarters of fifty-five, but keeping the eighty-five percent attendance.
That's correct.
I have a second.
Now we have a second. Is there anybody has a question on this? Mr. Burgrale.
No, I wanted to say something about the quarters. Oops, sorry. I wanted to get a different viewpoint on the quarterlies, but we're not going on the quarterlies, so I can.
Ms. Burgrale.
Uh, my question, one that's here. We're making these changes, and we're gonna be affecting our nine through twelve toward students who kind of don't get you or which they mess up. Why wouldn't we propose this for our sixes, eights? Where we can let them do this under a new system, sort of, it can grow with them to be successful, instead of, you know, doing it all across the board like that.
This is six and twelve.
But as I say, why are we? Our high school students, those grades are their forever grades. Our sixes, eights are practicing duty high school students, you know. So why would we make these policy changes with the lower grade students? And then after a year, we have data that doesn't adversely affect them during their high school career. It doesn't penalize them for having a bad tenth grade year, this is the first time. I, I don't know if you can't have two different standards or two different levels of grade. And then if this is a successful trial, then it grows with that student. And is the policy now going forward for that grade? Do you need, uh, have it being clear for that?
So you want to have a separate policy for six and seventh, because eighth grade students can take regional courses?
Middle school students, it's a starting point, not just, we have common program dumped on us and the whole district, every grade has to deal with it. You know what I mean? So we, do we have the ability, do we have an opportunity here to do something new and let it grow with the kids? I, I don't know if I'm, you know, speaking stuff that's not normal, I don't know.
Mr., that, that amendment.
So I, I, I think we should probably look at the policy. This is why this was important, not to rush these policies upon entering. So, I, you know, we heard a lot of commentary about when we went to school. It's not how school was twenty years ago. We have different experiences, we were literally impacted by a pandemic. So one of the items that Mr. Burgrale is, um, recommending is that perhaps we do it at our middle level and build students up. Rest assured that any policy that goes forward, I am going to have a town hall and recommend to folks who are part of this policy to explain to the parents, because this is going to be different, it's going to be impactful, and we need to understand how we explain and address to our community the changes that we're making. So, that is a good recommendation, but I do think that it needs more, um, massaging and explanation, and perhaps we could start at a point that we could begin.
Right now, we have a motion on the floor, the second, to amend number four to go to four quarters of fifty-five. Any other comments before we can roll call?
Ms. Falet.
Before we take the roll call, can we make a motion to table this to vote with her read before we vote on anything, any amendments? Would that be possible?
I continue my motion.
You'd need a second on that and then no discussion.
Oh. So if it's table, it's gonna stay the way it is where no attendance requirement at all?
I, I would like to amend certain things in this, and I think that we need to vote with her read because we're, we're kind of wasting time going in circles here. And, and like Dr. Manning Campbell said, we can have a town hall and get more.
So, so is a motion to table, with a second, there's no discussion for tabling, so we have to take a roll call for tabling?
Make a motion on the floor.
I have to take.
No.
No. No, I think we're having to take it off.
To vote to table, right?
Yeah.
I have, I, I, I feel we were voting on one through three, and that four was gonna be?
Yeah, Ms. Falet voted to table the entire.
Okay, I missed that, thank you.
Roll call.
Two, two seconds, I'm sorry.
Um, Mr. Levinstein, second.
Ms. Lamar?
No.
Ms. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Falet?
Yes.
Ms. Schreider, I am?
No.
Ms. Falet?
No.
Mr. Burgrale?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Ms. Rain?
No.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Motion to table.
Motion is table. We go to seven point two. Resolution to adopt policy on the second reading, fifty-two oh five, credit recovery and credit approval for students. And we'll, Ms. Falet, for, for, uh, reading.
Can we just get that policy up, please? So this is the second policy from shared decision-making. So again, the group, large team of people, including frontline workers, those teachers, looked at this policy, and who's in agreement? Are we in agreement? I'll try to make the, uh, colors make sense. So, uh, one through nine, so that would be at the top where it says grade seven through twelve. The next line says grade seven through twelve in red. Uh, the bullet, um, amending that to say, uh, for scheduling conflict, credit for recovery, grade seven through twelve, seven through twelve, going down to the makeup unit, seven, you just covered it, right there. Um, and then keep going, that first paragraph right there, other administrator, that one. Um, and then in the numbers, one, two, three, four, and five, we are in agreement. Um, six, by the way, seven, uh, on here in the green, this is from the H R. Six qualifies distance learning, so back to my script so I don't forget anything. Uh, the changes on six and seven that you're looking at right now on page two, and number five on page three, are about making distance learning and digital learning available to only medically fragile students and students who are legally unable to attend school in person. The addition of that phrase, students who are legally unable to attend school in person, is related to giving level one, two, and three sexual offenders the required education by law. So when we get to that policy, I'll explain to you, if you are a student who is a level one, two, three sexual offender, you would get that learning online as opposed to inside of the school. So that's why that was added. And I hand it back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Falet. Any questions on this policy, this policy?
What, what are the recommendations, um, by senior staff on this? Because it seems like it's a little, a little tight. Could, could you speak to that?
I think, you know, the hesitation we have is in the elimination of digital learning for credit accrual as well as for, um, for credit recovery. Uh, digital learning is something that is used in almost all school districts at this particular point across the country. Um, it is an opportunity for those students who are excelling to even accelerate further. I think what we need would be a very strong regulation and, uh, an adjustment to the handbook that creates the opportunity for integrity in the way we implement the model. And then it needs to be monitored and, and assessed and audited to ensure that we, we have that criteria established. Um, I understand the concern from our committee on, you know, the possibility of digital learning. But I think that as administrators, if we were to implement a very tight model that's audited and reviewed, I think our students would benefit from having that as an option. Taking this away as an option, again, our students need additional resources, they need additional opportunities. And for those students who could benefit from this for credit accrual, let them go, let them have it, let, let them succeed. And for those students that are struggling during marking periods and, and they want us to try to keep up with their studies, giving them an opportunity for the, to take digital learning to, uh, to, to make up those credits, I, I think we should allow them to do that. Again, with very tight protocols for, uh, monitoring the system.
Just a mention on number eight, the entire line that gets stricken out was, I believe, a decision from the shared decision-making team that was assembled, was it over the summer?
So, I just want to make a comment on that. Um, those, that team gets together, all these recommendations for consideration by the superintendent, and it's clearly stated in the shared decision-making plan that that's the purpose of it. It's up to the superintendent to consider those recommendations from that multiple stakeholder group. It's not just the rubber stamp by the superintendent, because the super, superintendent has a very different lens than one group versus one group, or versus one group. The superintendent has to take into account parents and families, students, community, educators, everyone. So, the superintendent reviews, makes her decision, and then we move forward to the policy committee for their final decision.
Mr. Howard, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, until those tangible protocols can be put in place, would it be wise to send this back to committee and then bring it back? Uh, would you like to move to table this, uh, resolution, Mr. President?
Can I say number four?
You have a second, yeah.
So, what do you say?
Seven. I just wanna. No, I can't say.
Yeah, there's a second, so we can't talk? Uh, roll call, please.
Ms. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Falet?
Yes.
Ms. Schreder?
Number three.
No.
Ms. Falet?
No.
Mr. Burgrale?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Ms. Rain?
No.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Lamar?
No.
Motion passed.
Seven point three, resolution to adopt on the second reading, policy fifty-four fifty, notification of sex offenders. Ms. Falet.
Okay. So this policy, and this is straight from the H R. This policy was originally written for paroled, conditionally released, or on probation, level one, two, and three sexual offenders. And it was adopted on October twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeen. There is a special circumstances clause in this N E C S D policy that allows for level three sexual offenders to be present on school grounds and in school buildings under particular conditions. And the policy, as it exists, if you could just raise that up. If you look at the bullets there, under special conditions, this is the existing policy, the sex offender, it would be allowed if, if it's a registered student, a participant, or employee of the district, or if the sex. or if the sex offender is a parent, a guardian of a student. That's with special circumstances. This is not a shared decision making. I pulled this policy for review as the chair. And it went through this board's first policy committee meeting a few weeks ago. And then it was discussed at the last meeting. It is the policy committee's proposal to have the special circumstances clause removed, thereby barring from school property, all level one, two, and three sexual offenders who are on parole, conditionally released, or on probation. And this has been cleared by our attorneys. The removal of the special circumstances clause would not interfere in any way with a student who is a sexual offender's right to receive an education. The policy that you just tabled has a clause to allow that student to receive that education online. Without that option there, the district would find a way, if this is passed, to give that student that education outside of the school. The removal would not interfere with a parent or guardian who is a sexual offender's right to attend graduation as this could be done virtually. The removal would not interfere with any sexual offender's right to vote as absentee ballot voting is available. And in the actual law itself which drives this, sexual offenders have the right to vote at a polling place after seven P M. The amended policy as proposed would contain the first three paragraphs only and remove the special circumstances clause. Mr. Shaw, is there anything you need to clarify before I get it back to Mr. Striderheim?
I'd just like to clarify that this policy would be legal should you adopt it in this form. And it would also be legal if you wanted to allow the discretion that's inherent in what is being stricken. So from a legal perspective, either way would be legal, so it's a board decision.
Mr. Howard, so, um, Ms. Shaw, speak to me, the special circumstances, why are they, why were they put here? And for what purpose? And what special circumstances allow to happen and prevent from happening and from happening?
There really isn't a bright line test for the special circumstances as this is written. That would be within the discretion of the superintendent and the parole officer?
So my question is to the superintendent now. Could you tell us, or give an example, how this special circumstance would be used or could be used?
So it would give me an opportunity to speak to the parole officer if that situation does arise. So what's harmful for me, um, and just to make it clear, because I know that there's been a lot of buzz, um, inaccurate buzz on social media that were letting in a certain type of people and children in the audience who are watching, um, into the district. That's not happened, that's not happened since I've been here, right? So a special circumstance, um, as the superintendent was, would to work with the parole agency to see if there was an allotment of anyone coming into our district, right? And the special circumstances is one that's given to districts. That gives me the authority as a superintendent. And I'd like to remain, I'd like to have that authority because it impacts our students. The most hurtful, um, as the educational leader, is to have a child, a seven-year-old child, everyone else is coming in to a ceremony, and that child's parent is not allowed, um, I'm not even given the opportunity to make special arrangements for that parent if such an event did occur.
So, Ms. Shaw, is this special circumstance unique to Newburgh, New York City School District? Or is this special circumstance used throughout the state?
That's very common, and I think it derives from the New York State School Boards Association Policy Service. And the same may be true of the ERICOSI Service. I haven't been able to locate that yet, but...
Could you repeat what you said about NISTPA?
Pardon me?
Can you repeat what you said about NISTPA?
Well, NISTPA is the New York State School Boards Association. They have a policy department, a legal department, and they share policies at your expense, you think we service, and probably hundreds of other districts do as well. And again, this is a local decision to be made, whether you want the special circumstances exception or not.
Ms. Bligh?
Madam Superintendent and Mr. President, I have some questions to get clarification from myself and maybe others about the district's sex offender policy. The impression given from postings on social media, including postings by current board members, is that the policy in its current form is that the superintendent would allow and does allow level three sex offenders to teach and interact with the children and have free access to our school buildings, to roam as they wish. These postings encourage others to continue and expand on this false narrative. The discussion of policy, which is our responsibility, is something that should be done, but not in the social media realm where facts are scanned and misinformation is abundant. I'm trying to understand how we got here, Mr. President. It seemed that the superintendent's special permission was added to this policy on October twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen. And after it was discussed at the October fourth, two thousand seventeen, policy committee, you were the chairperson. On October twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, you made a motion to move this resolution forward for a vote, and you voted for the change to this policy along with all the other board members present. Mr. President, you shepherded this change in two thousand seventeen as the policy chairman, and then you voted for it. If you change your stance on this policy, that is certainly acceptable. What I'm trying to understand is that you appeared on a news program and stated that the superintendent can or would, can allow or will allow sexual, level three sex offenders in our buildings as employees. Why do you and Ms. Vice President steal misleading information which only is designed to create hysteria and build up your media brand standing? So my questions to the superintendent are, can you tell me if there are any level three sex offenders? You allow to interact with students in our building? Would you ever allow it? Can you tell us a scenario that we might, and special permission would be granted and the monitoring logistics that would be associated with it? Is the change today being proposed removing the superintendent's discretion to allow access? What would be your recommendation on this policy, leaving it as written or accepting the proposed changes from the policy committee?
So I would propose leaving it as it's written to give me the authority as an educational leader to make decisions for the district. Um, I would ask Mr. Striderheim to respond to the other questions because I am not sure where he received this information from in terms of that I'm allowing, um, certain individuals. So I'll leave that to the board leadership to describe and explain where they have that information and why they would be on local media and on social media explaining that. Um, in addition to that, any, um, I want, you know, people to understand, everyone who works in the district undergoes a background check. Right? So in order for them to come in, they have to be cleared. We don't just hire people. People who show up on our front steps, we hire them. There's an extensive background check. So I really, you know, I take offense to being, um, called out erroneously and inaccurately um, in terms of what's happening in the district. So I, you know, even, Mr. um, Striderheim and Ms. Bligh, could you answer those questions? Would they perhaps have that information, Agent Hunt?
I'm gonna be honest with you. First of all, the policy as written, I'm asking for a legal interpretation of this. Does the policy as written with the special circumstances, could the district hire a level three under this current policy?
Only if SED would give clearance. And they do apply certain standards to formally protected personnel. So it would have to be cleared through SED, and then it's possible for that to occur.
The only thing I said regarding this policy was that the policy as written could allow a level three to be in our schools as a student, as a parent, a visitor, or an employee, which is the way the policy is written. I don't know if there are any level ones, twos, or threes in the schools. Because the last time I asked about, six months ago, when I brought up the policy again, was that, the answer was not to my knowledge. Back in two thousand seventeen, I fought this policy two times before it came to the policy committee. On the third time, what happened was they changed the number. And they put fifteen policies in at the same time. My bad. I made a mistake. And ever since then, I've been trying to get it changed by asking the board to put it on the agenda. And since I didn't have the votes, I couldn't get it on the agenda. I have it on the agenda now, and it seems like this board wants to keep it the way it is, which is the board's prerogative. But that's the truth. I said on the News Twelve, speaking for myself, I said, I don't want level threes in our schools. That was my comment. I was speaking for myself, and I am allowed to as a citizen, and actually as an individual board member, to speak to the media as per board policy. Mr. Howard?
Excellent for clarification. The article referred to you as president of the Newburgh and New York City School District Board of Strategic Leadership and you state that since two thousand seventeen, you've tried to put this on the floor. I would love to see where you put, moved to put a motion on the floor to rescind this policy, change this policy, and it was voted down by the board. I know that not to be true. In the six, since seventeen, it has never come on the floor and has never been voted down by the board. And I challenge you to show me when that happened.
I don't think I did, but I asked. I, no, I'm talking about, I stood for him and I've made, I've even sent emails asking for this policy to be changed. Because I made a mistake in two thousand seventeen, I admit my mistakes. So, Mr. President? And I, as far as the media calling me the board president, I have control of the media, yes. I said, I don't want level threes in our buildings. And that is the statement. And for people to say that I was saying something else, that's a lie. Ms. Bligh?
When it comes to policy, it really, it is about legal. And there's no room for I feel, I think. It's what is the current policy, what is the law, and what is the intent? And whether you told this to Blaze Motors or not, you are representing for all of us. And you know that, that's a fact. You're not the spokesperson for the district, Dr. Manning Campbell is.
Board policy provides me the ability to speak as an individual board member to the media. It does.
Not on behalf of the board?
It actually does.
No, it does not.
There is a board, there's a policy for board president that speaks for the board, but I actually was not speaking for the board or the district, so I was speaking for myself.
Okay, so, Mr. President, the policy actually says you can speak as the president on behalf of the board when we make a statement, when we make a statement. Did you confirm with the, all board members before you made that statement?
I didn't speak for the board, so you? I spoke for myself as an individual. But policy eleven thirty, news media relations, says the board president is designated as a spokesperson for the board when the board is making a statement on an issue. I wasn't making a statement on an issue.
So what did you just say?
I was making a statement for myself. I made a statement for myself, just like when you.
We all saw it.
I said, I don't want level three sex offenders in our schools. Did I say I as a board, as a board president? No.
When they introduced you, did they say the president will move our policy to the board's case?
That's what they said on the screen or whatever, that wasn't me. I told the news reporter, I'm speaking for myself.
Did you correct me? Did you ask for a correction?
No, why should I ask for a question? I don't even get misrepresented. I don't care. The news media does whatever they want. I get misrepresented all the time. Do you want me to go back and do all this other stuff? Ms. Bligh?
No, Mr. President, you do whatever you want. You want us all to follow the rules, but you don't want to follow the rules. Pass the comment.
What rule did I break? What policy did I break, Ms. Bligh? The policy says right here. Yes, Ms. Rain?
I have a question. So are we voting on this policy tonight? Because I need to know what we're voting on. So we are voting to say if we want level three sex offenders in the building or not. Is that what we're voting on? What is it that we're actually voting on? Because with all this conversation...
It's taking the special circumstances out of the current policy so that there is no discretion by the superintendent or the parole officer in joint agreement to allow sex offenders in our building.
Okay, you're not mistaken. So we are voting on whether we want to have this discretion of allowing level three sex offenders in the building or not?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, roll call, please. Ms. Levinstein?
Just a quick comment, and, um, this is, this is President, I agree with you. I don't want level three sex offenders in buildings. I think most people in this room don't want that. That's not what we're, we're voting on. We would prefer that not happening. We would prefer there not be level three sex offenders. But there are times when they may be extraordinary, and we're leaving it up to the judgment, if we let this alone. We're leaving it up to the judgment of the superintendent. It doesn't mean, and, because that's the way it will be portrayed in the media, that if we vote to leave this in, that we want level three sex offenders in, in the building. And that's not the case.
All right, can I ask, leave a question? If we left this the way it is and the superintendent has discretion, would there be any kind of notification process if a level one, two, or three sex offender was allowed to be in schools? What notification process is required by this special circumstance?
That would be up to the superintendent to decide how to get notice based upon the circumstances.
Thank you, Ms. Bligh.
And again, before, this is painted in a false narrative. If we do not adopt this new policy, this is not saying that we want sex offenders in our buildings. This is related to the actual law that was given to us by the New York State School Boards Association and preventing ourselves from potential liability and lawsuits that would take money away from the children in our district.
Ms. Lamar? Have there ever been lawsuits prior to policy day implemented resulting from someone's ability to attend a school without graduation, et cetera?
I can't recall any lawsuits in any district of the, as I've been in practice.
I have a question regarding the, um, access to the buildings. When there is a parent user conference, the building is pretty much open, and there is no use of the graphics system, is there?
The public principle, the public principle has... Can you say that again, Ms. Rain?
This is why, this is why a conversation should be made before we go to the meeting.
This is why, this is why a conversation should be made before we go to the media and say things that we're not sure about. And we will be, um, you, Mr. Stridion, and Ms. Puley to clarify because clearly you know something more than I do because you stated that you want to remove this based on circumstantial evidence. So I can't respond to that because I think that you know more than I do.
No, I'm just asking a question based on those of statement made by Mr. Levinson. Everyone who comes into the building goes through the raptor system. I just don't want sex offenders in our buildings. And whether discretion is superintendent or not, by taking this out, it makes it clear, no sex offenders in our buildings under any circumstances. It's up to the board to decide what they want to do. Mr. Howard and Mr. Burgrani.
Just to do a clarification of this to everyone here and everyone who's going to listen to this meeting, I don't think there's one board member out of the nine that wants Level 3 sex offenders and are those Level 3 sex offenders in proximity of our kids. That is not what this is about. I think that the caution at hand is remove the authority of the superintendent to make that decision. We pay her a good fee to do her job. And I think that under those circumstances, that addition right there would be safely understanding that that would never happen unless there are extenuating circumstances. But I would like to add something to this, that if this does occur, there is a circumstance, that the board be notified immediately.
The current policy does not include that.
I just said I would like to add that to the policy. That if that comes, that situation occurs, that if she makes that decision, the board is informed immediately that that took place.
Ms. Burgrani?
I have to say too, I do not want sex offenders in my schools. I don't want this to take place. The only issue with this is we are taking away the special circumstances. We are taking away the ability for superintendent to make this decision with information from the court system, from the probation officers, who have information that is not voidable and we are not ready to. Records can be sealed, all of that stuff that happens. So she's making a form decision that this policy, the way it's originally written, gives her the ability to just have all the information to make an appropriate decision. That's what I'm saying.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Can you clarify how we're voting, please? We're voting on?
We're voting on the policy as written.
I have, I have a question.
You're taking out the special circumstances?
Ms. Green?
No. Mr. Howard and, I'm sorry, I can't. But Mr. Howard and Mr. Burgrani asked that if this is not taken out, that if the superintendent was giving information, Mr. Burgrani, or, Mr. B. As Mr. B. said, that we would be informed of this. I'm just asking because I'm trying to get clarification in terms of trying to see both sides. So if she had an extenuating circumstance, that would be conveyed to the board? And then what? We would decide if we agree with her or not? I'm not, that's what I'm saying. I'm not understanding this.
The policy does not allow the board to override the decision of the superintendent.
But I'm saying we need it. If we made it, okay, so if we, we would just be made aware of it. So it's not a thing of whether we agree with it or not. It's just that we would just be made aware of it.
What does that do?
That's what I'm asking. Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't do anything, it doesn't give us information. Mr. Howard?
I only said that because that's what you, you said that.
I'm asking for notification to the public. Notification? It's not good if it's the board goes, but the student that's sitting in a room with a Level 3 sex offender, how does that help?
It's not by request, so I said...
You just want the board to know what was out in the public, but not the public.
Don't, don't try that.
No, I'm just what I'm saying. What's the board going to do about it?
We will know that our superintendent made extenuating circumstances in regard to a request.
Ms. Puley?
Just going to add my personal viewpoint. I don't care about the special circumstance. I'm a parent and a sexual free offender in my kid's class. I don't want them there. That's my point of view. Under any special circumstance, if you've done a crime of that magnitude, I don't want you near my child. Thank you.
Mr. Howard, yes, have there been any requests of this magnitude recently over the last few years?
Since I've been here, no. But I know that Mr. Stridion has made statements that I'm allowing rapists into our schools. So I would...
I didn't say that. I never said I'm not allowing rapists in our schools. What is this?
So Mr. Stridion may have additional information.
Can we vote on this?
Yes.
Roll call. Voting on the as-is to remove the special circumstances?
Mr. Lamar?
Yeah.
Mr. Levinson?
No.
Ms. Puley?
No.
Mr. Stridion?
Yes.
Ms. Blythe?
Yes.
Mr. Burgrani?
No.
Mr. Derai?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Howard? Did not pass, did not make the ballot.
7.4 Resolution to adopt policy on first reading policy 4526.1 Internet Safety. Ms. Puley?
Okay, so this is the fourth of the night. This is not part of the shared decision-making. It's one that I put up for discussion. And what you're looking at here, there's two sections. So the policy board, policy committee, is looking, looking to tighten this policy to ensure that our students are not exposed to visual depictions on the internet that are obscene or child pornography, et cetera, as defined by the Children's Internet Protection Act. The policy committee proposes removing the current underlined red section, so that's the part that's up right now, the underlines, which allows the disabling of the filters that block out these sites and images under certain conditions and replacing it with more defined language that outlines the only times that the filters can be removed. So the change says senior staff supervision. Any such measures may be relaxed or disabled to the extent necessary for law enforcement review and investigation and for students in AP college classes or criminal justice classes required to do specific research per the curriculum. The relaxing or disabling of technology protection measures for the purpose of viewing child pornography or other obscene content is prohibited. And this was checked, double-checked, and lines edited in by our attorneys. And then if we could go down to the next change. This was added, this is a section straight from the law itself that the attorney suggested be added to this, and it reads, "The viewing or transmission of obscene materials for child pornography in school, on school grounds, or from and to school or school grounds is strictly prohibited. Anyone privy to information pertaining to such activities must report such activity to the superintendent who will cause an investigation to be conducted. Law enforcement authorities will be contacted as appropriate." And again, this was added by the attorney. I'll go back to you.
Any question, um, actually, do we do a second portion of the second one? Okay. Any questions on this one? Ms. Green?
So as to discuss that policy, I just want to also be getting ready for the rest of the board. Um, the district as a part of Department of Education is under FCC guidelines. Um, and some of those guidelines are the Child Internet Protection Act. So this requires education systems to have certain filters that screen out child pornography and obscene content. The district takes two different filtering measures. We have the basic Child Protection Act that all districts must adhere to. And then we also have an in-district filtering system called GoGuardian. It's something that parents will apply in the fall. It is specifically designed for education to ensure that not only are we making sure that we are filtering the content that falls within the Child Protection Act, but also other materials that may come through is designed for education and allows the filtering content of, um, of internet. Um, we also talked a little bit about the relaxation of that. Um, we don't relax filters. Um, for entry, there's a process that happens with my senior network person and myself if there is a content that needs to be relaxed. Oftentimes, this does happen in college AP courses. We call it the content is college-level in AP. But the district does take every measure to ensure that we are filtering to the best of our ability. We have aligned ourselves on some of the industry-leading protection in GoGuardian. Um, it's, you know, a nationwide program designed specifically for this purpose.
Ms. Levinson, Ms. Puley?
So I'm just ask, um, senior staff, if this changes here, will it affect what we do as a district and how?
So there's two different proposed changes. Um, I do have, you know, the first part of it, this is, this is kind of currently what we do. The only concern I have is just the relaxing of content for AP or college-level courses or criminal justice courses. There could be high school-level content in U.S. history that could be seen as obscene. And I know that curriculum people can assist, to issue on that. Um, the current filters that we have, there hasn't, hasn't been a time where I've had relaxed filters. So teachers plan their, their, um, their lessons. They, they look for their resources. And I have not had a request since I've been in this position to, to lessen that because GoGuardian and the current filter policy that we use do such a good job of making sure that we are in compliance with the FCC, we are also in compliance with this policy. That's what our net health doctor was basing around.
So how could, how are you going to implement this policy? If this policy goes forward, how would you implement this?
Well, I think the...
Turn the filter more? I mean, how is that a habit?
I don't think that there would for the first part of it. I'm not, um, I don't, I don't currently have a way that I'm going to implement it because based on the filters that I have to do by law. Um, I would just review what my current filters are. Filters are in GoGuardian, which are recommended based on this policy. So I'll reconfirm that that is occurring. What my, um, the other part of the concern would have to be the second part where, um, I would have to come up with some monitoring system for, um, students and staff to report, and then an investigation would have to be concluded. So if there was a report or someone reported, based on this policy, if it was to go into effect, I would have to work along with building level leadership and our, my notification system, if something is seen, president I go investigate. And then whether it's a staff member, it's an HR concern, it's a student, student member, it could be a court violation. So I, I would have to implement that.
But that should be done now. I mean, that, well, if someone's, I think now policy should be in effect.
It, it is...
Whether this is changed or not.
It is in effect now to part of the regulation. So to this policy, there's a regulation that goes with this policy. And within that regulation, it does state that those things should be reported. There have been several times this year that my team and I have had to assist in some type of student behavioral issue that has it. So this is just a reinforcing of that, but, um, the, it will cause an investigation to be conducted. So if, so on every report, there would have to be a mandatory, whether it was staff or student, a mandatory investigation.
Ms. Puley and Ms. Green? Do you have a question, Ms. Green? Yeah, there is. Ms. Puley, then, Ms. Green?
So are there any negative implications to changing this policy that we're not seeing? Ms. Peterson, did you see any?
I'm worried about, I don't know the scene. I'd say I'm worried about the high school-level curriculum component of it or it just states that only AP and college-level students are criminal justice. So as a student, I know that we had, um, student presentations that were not a part of AP or college-level, that did a lot of presentation, and I did a lot of research on things, um, a couple of weeks ago. I wouldn't be able, if there was a content to open. It rarely happens. I, I just want the board to know. I've not released any or lowered any filters. But I worry about just saying that AP and college-level students can have access to higher-level things. Like that, something for me is a little concerning. Um, that there could be, uh, you know, I, I know many teachers that in, with regular region-level students have access to content that may interest them, it may be considered college-level. So that would be my only concern.
Ms. Green?
I was going to ask a question about something similar to Ms. Puley in terms of is it possible that some type of information can be construed as what they want to take out? That's what I'm asking. Because if they're saying that they don't want certain savory, um, information or stuff being brought up on a computer, are you saying that it's possible that with this research that these kids do, that something can be considered along those lines? That's what I'm asking.
So for instance, right now, um, there's one place, there's one time that I had to relax. Um, or I had to allow access to was our Manners program, for instance. It's cybersecurity. In order for our student to be able to access certain parts of some cybersecurity content, there was, that process was done, right? So when something is labeled obscene, obscene on the issue head, it's not necessarily that it's violent. It could just be a back-up coding thing, right? So we have coders that put different syntax in that can, can block in our coders because of the syntax of the code. We have programmers from all over the world, and things translate differently. So there's some times where I have to say work in collaboration with Manners or P-Tech to make sure that those sites can be allowed for our coding program. Um, when it comes to obscene curricular content, I haven't had to do that. That's the only time in collaboration with our college partners.
Thank you.
Ms. Lamar and Ms. Levinson?
The example that you're stating would be covered under this, correct? Because it's college-level, I think?
That one would be. If I have a, if I have an in-district computer primary course that has accessing content that's not college-level, I'd not be able to do that.
So I, I don't see a lot of change in this, and I don't see the practical of a lot of change. And the one sentence in here that, that leads me to say I would go yes for this is the relaxing or disabling of technology protection measures for the purpose of viewing child pornography or other obscene content is prohibited. So I, I don't have a problem with, um, not being able to relax that for those purposes. You know, because it's not specific. I mean, it's very specific. Child pornography or other obscene content, that you can't relax that. So I, I don't have a problem going forward with this particular policy.
Any other, any other comments? Ms. Bligh.
So, you were saying, and this is my, my only concern, because I agree with Mr. Levinson, it does seem like, yes, we, we don't want child pornography being viewed in schools by anyone. But, uh, you know, you said obscene material might be considered coding. And would this prohibit students from being able to use valuable sites? Would there be a way for you to enable that, or is this just cut and dry, they can't use it now?
So, so currently, if I had a course, um, for instance, that I had, um, a, a teacher and of course, it's kind of a special project, that is not AP or college level, and they had to lessen the filter, they would block from the site. Maybe it's a, sometimes, whatever site it was, and it had an educational purpose. I would, I could look at it, but I wouldn't be able to allow that teacher access to it. It, it just goes ahead because the specific boundary around the policy just says AP or criminal justice classes. So, in criminal justice, that could be government. So, if there's a government class that's doing something, or a U.S. history course, many of our history can be seen as obscene, I would not be able to, to lessen that.
This, this policy only deals with obscene child pornography. So, I don't understand your point of view when it's talking about educational material. If you determine that it's not visual depictions or obscene or something, and I would think it is just a coding thing, that po, this policy does not cover that.
Right, but the thing is, is that once it's deemed that way. So, suppose a teacher's trying to go to the site and our filter's blocking because it's obscene, right? If they try to reach out and say, Alex, this is not obscene. This is a part of our unit that we're trying to do. The way this policy is written, I wouldn't be able to relax it unless that course was AP or college level. So, that, that's what, that's what it prohibits.
But you said you've never been asked.
I've never been asked, but, you know, every, we have really creative teachers that may ask for something, but I'm just letting the board know that as well. The MERS program would be covered under this because it's AP or college level. Um, but that's my only concern.
Dr. Carter.
Um, I think if we're talking about specifics such as the MERS program, AP and college courses, we also need to consider some of our science material and research, some of our sociology material that examines frequently research alternate lifestyles, as well as art history. Some of those sites can occasionally be flagged under this type of policy.
Has it been flagged in the press room?
I don't know that, I said some maybe. So, in excess of caution, if we're going to look, if the board is going to consider making those changes, what I would ask is that perhaps you take into consideration, instead of only providing for criminal history, AP and college courses, criminal justice, rather, I'm sorry, that perhaps it would be prudent to include other areas that might be affected. That's my only comment.
Where is the line drawn for other areas?
I think that's an educational prerogative, and that's the kind of material that teachers would bring to Alex for consideration. And if Alex had any concerns, she would bring that to the superintendent. Thank you.
Dr. Campbell.
I mean, why, I mean, I understand some of the concern, but I encourage the conversation from the professionals, um, in the district. We have a policy that we have not had any issues with, to my knowledge. Ms. Peterson does not, we have not had any issues in terms of, um, for child pornography. Our concern with changing this policy, um, again, there's been no assessment, just come in, change everything without having accurate information, right? So, it is important to have all the information before a decision is made so that we can iron these things out. We are moving to change policies that will have impact on our students. They can have a health course, that information is going to be blocked. We have, what I heard and what I know is that we have two, um, sites that already monitors what we have coming to our school district. So, to now remove or to put an additional, um, something additional to block additional access could impede our instructional programs and instructional processes. So, you know, I just wanted to really have a conversation before we decide about what we think and what we feel. And I think Ms. Bligh said best, right? When you want to move to change a policy, it's not about what we feel, what we think, or what we believe. It's about intent and... It's about intent and purpose and I think you, you were, and the law, right? So, it's not about opening or giving students or people an opportunity for child pornography. It's about how does this impact our educational system? Please utilize us as a resource. We are the professional educators and administrators in the district.
Mr. Levinson. Would putting, instead of just eliminating it to AP and criminal justice, would putting high school classes in there make, make it... I'm not going to open that to high school. I make a motion that be adjusted to high school class.
Sure. Roll call.
Okay. So, do we need to make a motion to adjust it to high school? Or can we just change it like that?
We can, we can add high school classes to the motion. Motion to amend to high school.
So, right now, we're going to go on motion to amend it.
To add high school.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second.
Second.
Motion to table this president. All right, and now we're going to take a look at what we actually were adding items that were discussed with the professionals. Motion to table this, that, we have a...
No, I think you made a commentary, you need, you need to respond.
Everything we need to know, everything we need to know before voting on this policy change.
Did you second the motion yet?
So, what do we vote on now?
Now that I voted to table it.
Okay.
Yes, roll call.
Ms. Bligh? Yes. Mrs. Stradion?
No.
Ms. Falee?
No.
Mr. Burgarli?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
No.
Ms. Levinson?
No.
Motion to table, passed.
Seven point five. Resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four board goals. This item is at the first meeting on July sixth. At one hour and thirty-four minutes, I asked the board members to submit their recommendations for board goals so that it could be voted on and discussed at a future meeting in the next two weeks, which became a month. The only person to submit board goals was Dr. Falee. No other board members submitted. This is up for discussion, review, and if you want to vote on it, we'll vote on it. So, um, any other? Thank you. Any questions on this item? No questions, we will go for a vote. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Stradion?
Yes.
Ms. Falee?
Yes.
Mr. Burgarli?
No.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
No.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Ms. Levinson?
No.
Ms. Falee?
No.
Fine, yes. Passed.
Seven point six, resolution to amend the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four committee assignments. It says, it's a successful. Okay. The change, the only change to the committee structure is, uh, Mr. DeRae, uh, is the pop, the finance chair, and Mr. Burgarli is now the co-chair. That is the only change on this, so we're voting on that change. Can I have a second and a motion for this?
I'm able to rescind resolution committee assignments. Can I have a second?
Second.
Rescind committee assignments?
What's more?
The rescind committee assignments.
Second. Mr. Shaw.
This is our only chance.
In my opinion, the, the board can't just by resolution change. You could, you could have a policy that would restructure the committees.
The point I'm trying to make is that, um, the superintendent had recommended a workshop model, and that was completely disregarded. We have no information on that, and I would like more information on that rather than a dictatorial decision upon the balance committees that we have expressed concerns about and have not been answered by the board.
Ms. Bligh, the workshop model has nothing to do with committees.
It's, it's not your determination, it's the determination of the superintendent.
The superintendent for the work, the workshop model?
Can you speak to us?
So, I believe it was the first meeting in July, um, or the second, I'm not sure, um, that I proposed having the workshop, my committee of the whole, so we can discuss every single committee with the public, um, so that everyone, you know, tonight's really a good example of, you know, in terms of policy, uh, so that everyone have, would have a voice at the table. So, we would have a committee of the whole do that one time per month. We do understand that there are committees that we need to have outside of the board meetings, such as personnel, because that is, you know, some confidential material. Um, the audit and finance does not have to meet monthly, can we quarterly to provide some information outside of the committee of the whole? But that was a recommendation, and I think it supports what you've asked for, Mr. Stradion, in terms of, um, community engagement, because the community will have an opportunity to listen, to in on the committees, the committee of the whole as, as presented in one meeting.
Your workshop model replaces a board meeting. That's what the model would be presented. One meeting a month would be workshop, which would be a board meeting with no public input. And the second board meeting would be a regular board meeting that would have twice the amount of resolutions that you see on a regular board meeting, because you have a week. The committees are not related to the workshop model, other than the report back to the workshop. You would still, if you get rid of the committees, you're getting rid of the time for the board to ask the questions, the metaphor to the committee. And now, in coming up in September, the community input on the committees that they've been asking for for many, many years. So, you're proposing to rescind the committees and have all the committees meet at the workshop model? I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand.
So, let me clarify, um, as you stated earlier, I could have called you, and I, I did call you on that. I asked you to change the date and twice, and you, and you didn't. And I emailed and said, I'd like to revisit the workshop model. And you were, because that's just, and now I'm talking about it on the floor. I would like to revisit the workshop model, because as we do in the district that I teach in, it's called a committee of the whole, it's quite effective. And we can air out everything that we need to air out and ask these questions before we come to the floor, and we're not here until midnight.
Are you saying that we will not have four committees?
No, what Dr. Van Campbell said is that there will be some committees that wouldn't be exempt. We would all meet at one time. Mr. Shaw, do you clarify my question in the whole?
So, um, right now, the board has quote-unquote committees comprised of fewer than a quorum of board members, and they do separate functions. It is possible to have a committee of the whole meeting the whole board, acting as a committee on the same items that could be done at a workshop. It could be done as part of a regular meeting. And I think we need to take a look at your policy structure to see how that might have to be changed. I know you have a policy on regular meetings and on special meetings. I don't recall that there's anything right now about workshops. So, it may require a policy change to implement the model you're describing.
Ms. Green.
If we have all these committees at a board meeting, that means...
Point of order?
They are in spectacular, we don't have to pause the meeting.
So, I have to wait and ask my question?
Mr. DeRae, can you please pre, pre-stand?
Hold on, I can move for reconsideration on seven point five.
What? He's going to report now, can he say that again?
Sorry.
I'd like to move for reconsideration on seven point five.
Seven point five being the board goals. The board goals were approved, and the vote on the approval included your vote, and you would like to reconsider your vote. Is that it?
I can't really hear you well, is it?
Can't hear you.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. You voted, you?
I voted yes.
Yeah, you voted in favor of that, and now you'd like to change your vote, considering that it, that it was mistaken?
Yes.
Is there rationale for why you want to?
The honest answer is I'm feeling horrible and not a hundred percent with the program tonight, and I wasn't paying attention.
Under Robert's rules, if someone who voted, um, against, let's see, someone who voted in favor of it would move, and another who voted in favor of it to consider rescinding it, that would be the mechanism. It would be for a good cause shown. You're claiming the good cause shown was that, you, you weren't well in the sense of understanding how you were voting, and now you understand how you were voting?
Correct.
Okay, so that, that's my ruling on it.
That's what?
My ruling on it, you'd need to have two people who voted in favor of it to bring it back for reconsideration. And you've heard his reason why to reconsider, and then there could be a vote on it again. So, yes, folks, I'm agreeing, yes, folks, for reconsideration of it. One more. Could you read that? Or please, Paul, so could you read that, please? Are you reading or are you showing from my recollection of it? I challenge that. I, I have worked in other countries. It takes one person who voted in the affirmative to move a reconsideration of a resolution. I'm going to challenge it, which is a case to, not personal, but I, excuse me. Or is it libret? Is it, is it, any affirmative can reconsider a resolution? Well, what I said was that a motion and a second from people who voted in the affirmative to reconsider that previous affirmative vote brings it back for consideration, whether to vote again for it or to vote against it.
So, so reconsideration must have second, you think?
That's what I'm saying, yes.
We're back on seven point six. We have a motion and a second to amend the committee assignments. With Mr. DeRae as the chair of the finance committee, Mr. Bergarelli moved to be co-chair.
I'm sorry for being doing me having a question. I wanted to ask a question.
Yes, this green, you've been waiting for fifteen minutes. Ready?
The question I ask is, with this workshop model, I'm not completely understanding what it is. So, can that be the line? Because the way I understand it now, if there's a workshop model and the quote-unquote all the committees would be able to speak, I see the meeting going until way past any time that I would want to be here. So I'm trying to figure out how this workshop model works, because now I'm way past my bedtime as this, like seriously. I don't see this workshop ending sooner than we're, we're here now, so I need no clarification on that, because these meetings last long enough as they are. So I'm trying to figure out this workshop model.
We've had workshops in the past that included presentations as the written form of the superintendent laid out, and that form only had at least three committees on it to report to the works, workshop. So you wouldn't be having all the committees presenting according to the, the one paper that was handed out on, on July sixth. But the presentations and discussions used to have in 2013 would go well past midnight. And then, your board meetings would have twice the number of items on the agenda, because you'd only have one spot. Plus, there were times when you'd have to vote on things as a work session, but the public couldn't speak, because it was not set up that way. Public couldn't speak, because it was added on kind of the last minute. So, you would need a presentation by the superintendent of where a workshop model would look like, and that's the superintendent's right to have it on the agenda, and that's her idea. The committees are separate from the workshop, because the committees discuss only finance, only policy.
Pertain to the committee.
Yes, and it's more structured, it's more focused on only that. Some of the items discussed, the committee don't ever come up for vote, it's just. The way that I had proposed at committee was that to include community members, so that they would have a voice in the way that the policies are created, the way the curriculum is created, so it would be more open. The workshop model actually takes away, if you get rid of committees, if you rescind the committee appointments, you have no committees. You have only the workshop once a month, and the board meetings once a month. And you would have no public input, only one time a month would public input. This void.
Can you clarify that, Dr. Manny Campbell, how the workshop, because you're speaking very different superintendent and different plans, what a new model would look like? So I?
I want to reiterate, if we do have a committee of the whole, then we can have some of the committees meetings, so we can provide information. Yes, we would perhaps have lots of agenda here, a large district, but those agenda items would move swiftly, because we've already had the conversation. So the business meeting should really take about thirty minutes, because we spent the meeting two weeks before presenting items as a committee of the whole, gathering information, and board members had additional questions. But Mr. Shaw just proposed we can have a combination. And I understand, um, Mrs. Shredine's request, and I agree to have community participation. And as it was done before, perhaps there was not any. Mr. Shaw described that we can have a combo. In addition to that, we would welcome perhaps an email address where community members could submit questions to us that we can then respond to, in case they had questions while they were part of the committee of the whole. I just think it's prudent. I think since we're having so much discussion, it's best, you know, there's a need for transparency, and this would make it transparent in the, as we move forward as a, as a, as a community.
Mr. Lamar?
I'm a little confused, excuse me. The committee of the whole sounds like a replacement for committees, whereas what you proposed, what you, the, the paper you gave, I don't have it in front of me right now, but I did review it. You had three committees that would be meeting the week before the, the, the workshop, and there'd be three committees meeting the week after the workshop before the final. So that still has, there's still six committees showing on that sheet. But what's been, but now sounds more like, you know, policy and finance and tell the rest of them. Is that, I mean, what, what's the difference between the committee of the whole and what you gave us on a piece of paper?
They're two totally different situations. What was provided to you on July sixth in a workshop model was the previous workshop model that was implemented under the former superintendent, Dr. Satterfield. That particular model was very different. What I hear is the lady recommending is the possibility of something called a committee as a whole. So, when you think about the purpose and intent of the committees, as we used to do them in previous years, they were to present resolutions that were going to be put onto the board agenda, for clarification. So curriculum would present the item that was going to be put onto the resolution, the backup information, a little of the backstory, purpose, intent, and all of those particular things. So, it kind of parallels with a committee as a whole. So if you're going to have committee meetings that does the same thing in preparation for the board meeting, just have the conversation for everyone. One of the things that we, we wanted to kind of do with that particular model is to get everyone on the same page with the resolution. Instead of having a curriculum committee, there are three board representatives sitting on the curriculum committee. Andrea or Kate would go to present their resolutions. There was a hope that the three members of the curriculum committee would chime in and say, this is why it's important, this is why we endorse it, same thing with policy. This is why we, of course, are paying and endorsing and wanting more of it. We weren't seeing that happen. And it, it wasn't a, a voice that was coming from both, you know, the collective team of leadership as well as board. You take the committee as a whole, you get everyone to hear one shared conversation, one shared message, one shared decision. When you go to implement, you've got everybody already on the same page. I think it will take a lot of prep for us as the leadership to make sure that when we come to the table we're succinct, we're prepared, we're ready, and, and we're presenting with clarity. It would have to be done differently, but I think it's something that would absolutely save time. The need for additional committees would only be for personnel, finance, and possibly construction. In, in, in the way I view it.
Mr. Howard?
Hey, Mr. President. So I'm, I'm favorable with your ruling, is any? Because part of the whole, which I'm aware of, is being inclusive of the voice. I, I, I applaud your efforts in including the community, but also while you include the community, you silence the board members. Because if you look at the makeup of your committees, they're heavy-handed, or two people are dominating the committees. And so, yes, you invited the public, which is great, I, I applaud that, but you silenced the board members, and she got the voice. Now, committee of the whole, you will have the entire nine-member board sounding in on those committees, because we know what you did, and we know why you did it. But I don't think it was fair to the entire process of the board, community, and our district when you heavily load your committees and keep certain board members off of all other committees. So I think, I'm more in favor of going with the committee of the whole, because it will enhance, allow everyone to have a voice on this committee, and not silence certain board members.
So this committee of the whole was going to be an option, no matter who was going to be in charge of, you know, the board president. This was, this was planned before any of the, the change in, in, in board leadership. This was, or are you saying because of the committee assignments, you didn't like the committee assignments? So now it was going to a whole different model? I'm, I'm talking out.
Talking me?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Do you, do you remember the committee assignments from, from previous years? Can I help one?
When I'm talking about previous years, we're talking about what's happening now. And I said, I agree with her, not that I had a discussion or this was something I wanted to talk about prior to the change of leadership. I'm saying I agree with it, because there was a lot more inclusion of all board members' voices. What you purposely did not consider when you put your committee assignments together. You have three major committees, and you have three senior members of the board on a three committees. That's unheard of. That's unheard, and you know that.
Dr. Manny?
I want to respond to what you said, Mrs. Shredine. I want you to recall that July sixth, although you had been meeting with members before they took over the office about committee assignments, I did not know that. And so when I stood up to speak on July sixth, I had no knowledge of what you were have been planning for weeks with the board members before they were sworn in. So when I presented the committee of the whole, I didn't know what it meant was. So, I don't want you to think that I had knowledge of you meeting with certain people before they took over the office. You are having your meetings, and you planned to do this. I had no idea. So I want to make sure that you know that I utilize it as a recommendation, because I've seen it as, as practices in other districts. Please understand that I have no idea how you were doing committee structure, or what committee you were bringing forward. Just want to make that clear.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Green.
Can I, um, ask that we table this discussion on workshop? Because I'm, I'm just really confused, and could be because I'm tired or whatever, but I would like to motion that we table this, because I actually need to get more information, because I'm still confused with this workshop model.
Well, workshop model hasn't been put on as, as an item. Right now, the item is the committee assignments. Maybe Mr. DeRae is in the finance committee.
But she mentioned that she wanted to do a workshop, so?
But that's, that's not on the agenda.
Okay, okay, okay.
That, that's an item that could be brought at the next meeting by the superintendent to make a presentation.
Okay.
So right now, we have the committee assignments. We are second in the motion, any more discussion? Vocal.
Point of order, Ms. Paleri, motion to rescind the committee assignments. We never voted on that, just want to make sure how we move forward.
Did we have a second on that?
Yes, we did. Ms. Paleri and Ms. Howard seconded it. I see clarification. David.
That's not on this agenda. It's not a motion on the agenda.
Take motion to rescind the committee assignments.
Well, the committee assignments were, were made at the reorg meeting, right?
But they finalized today, because Mr. DeRae is being put on as the chair of the finance committee.
So then all of them are subject to finalization under this resolution?
Yes.
Then, then it would be fair game to, to have an amendment?
And so the motion and second is to rescind all committee assignments. Vocal.
All right, so we, quick discussion, if we're about to do this, but we already filed a law year one. What? What? Right, if we rescind the committees right now, what is the structure we have in place moving forward? Because we didn't ask that question last time, we didn't.
There would be no exceptional members committee meeting that's already scheduled for Thursday. There would be no committee meetings at all. Nothing. There would be reports to committees that don't exist.
So, I would say without some structure in place, no matter what it is, we probably shouldn't move forward with this? We got, we gotta know what the answer to that question is.
Chris DeRae?
I think parents, the committees don't meet over the summer usually, but our board president has ordered that. So if we wait until that's needed to see what a committee of the whole looks like, it's not going to happen, will you?
We've had committee meetings every summer for certain committees. There are certain items that have to be taken care of before the first day of school. And I didn't order anything. You keep saying I ordered. So, you can put it in writing, say, I, I, I suggest that they meet so they can get to know each other over the summer.
I'll send you back your email.
Sure. We should have, we should have some of these meetings, because we do have items that have to be taken care of before the first day of school. If you don't agree, that's fine. You're not having the meetings. So now we're rescinding all the committees, and we're going to have nothing in the place. Mr. Howard?
We have three meetings this morning. And if this is not voted on, I'm pretty sure the superintendent and leadership yourself included can come up with a process to replace those committees. And in fairness and honesty, you made a statement that's not totally true. You think over the summer, personnel committees, because of hiring, other committees have not been at the summer. You think over the summer, personnel committees, because of hiring for other committees, I'd not have it this summer.
But we have had committees. We didn't need personnel this summer, but we had policies. There were certain things on policy that would be great to take care of.
But that doesn't normally happen this summer?
No, it doesn't normally happen.
Okay, so what you said, you made a statement that is always.
We have had committees over the summer.
What, four county committees need over the summer?
Personnel. Unless there's. Unless something like that.
Yes.
Important items such as policy and exceptional leaders and curriculum. So, motion's on the table. Um, still others?
So, I'm a fan of the committee system that we had. I'm not a fan of the committee system the way it is now. So, I will vote to rescind it and have the leadership on that side of the table look at what's best for all.
Votable, please.
Ms. Paletti?
Just so unclear, I am voting on rescinding getting rid of all the things. That would be enough.
Mr. Bergerini?
Yes.
Mr. Doray?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
No.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Lamar?
I'm sorry to ask another question. Are we rescinding the committees or the committee assignments?
Rescinding the committees. Rescinding all committees.
No.
So, there's nothing to do about it?
Ms. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Paletti?
Yes.
Mr. Stradion?
Absolutely not.
You pass. Motion to rescind all committee assignments.
Mr. Shaw? Yeah. I'd like to respond to Mr. Howard's challenge to my interpretation of Roper's rules. Having reviewed Roper's rules, someone in the who voted in the majority could make the motion for reconsideration. The second could be by someone who did not vote in the majority.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Doray to rescind seven point. No, no, no. Reconsider seven point five, do we have a second?
Second.
Votable.
Will you just change the vote or do we free vote?
Free vote. They have to vote on the reconsider.
Oh, to allow reconsideration?
Yes. We voted to be a free vote.
Mr. Bergerini?
Read.
We.
This one.
We are voting to reconsider. Like a wild vote? It's almost something like ten points.
We'll vote again. Yes.
Mr. Doray?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
No.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Lamar?
No.
Ms. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Paletti?
Yes.
Mr. Stradion?
No.
Ms. Paletti?
No.
You pass. Yes, by this.
So, that means the board goals that were approved are now not approved?
Right.
She all the way. No, no, no.
Now we're doing.
Now you vote.
Okay. So, now do we have a second in the motion? Do we have a second in the motion to approve the board goals?
Yes.
Second. We have a second. Votable, please.
Mr. Doray?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
No.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Ms. Levinstein?
No.
Ms. Paletti?
No.
Mr. Stradion?
Yes.
Ms. Paletti?
Yes.
Mr. Bergerini?
No.
Did not pass.
So, now I have a question. Oh. What are we gonna now do now the board has no goals? Are we going back to the board or what are we doing because the board has no goals?
Board has no goals, no one submitted any other goals.
So, I'm asking, where are we going forward?
You can submit your goals to the board clerk and they will be up for a vote at a future meeting.
So, then I am very clear. Now, people are going to submit their goals to Mona and then they will be voted on at a later date in time.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Howard. So, I don't necessarily think we're gonna vote on them right away. I think that when we get the collaboration of all board members, we bring it back to the floor and we have discussion about the.
I'm sorry. We have discussions about the options that individual board members are put forth and then as a collective, we determine what's going to be our board goal. It's not being voted on right away.
Yes, but we have fifteen submission for votes, all fifteen will be up on the floor.
Absolutely not. And they will be discussed. Oh, correct, correct, they're not. And we have fifteen votes?
No.
No? Correct. I never said that. So, that's the workshop and we'll have a conversation around it.
It's a discussion out of work.
Correct.
Yes. That was the original plan, someone else submitted goals.
So, what, how many votes are we gonna have? Do we want?
How many people?
I'm curious.
We have to find out what we get.
Okay.
Right now, we only have four. Where are we? Seven seven. Resolution to appoint Orange County School Board Association liaison for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Any motion and a second? Second. I make a motion to amend. I'm removing my name from the Orange County School Board Association since there's no. I make a motion to remove my name, thank you. I have a second. Second. Votable. To amend.
Ms. Paletti?
No.
Mr. Bergerini?
Yes.
Mr. Doray?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
No.
Mr. Howard?
No.
Mr. Lamar?
No.
Ms. Levinstein?
No.
Ms. Paletti?
Yes.
Mr. Stradion?
Yes.
Did not pass.
Sorry.
Miss Paletti?
Resolutions on the table as is. Any discussion? Votable.
Mr. Bergerini?
No.
Mr. Doray?
No.
Ms. Green?
Time to go, but we've already voted.
We're voting on the one that the, I guess, all the board has is. Orange County School Board Association liaison.
Thank you. This one is.
So, you just said that you don't want to do it anymore?
I was out of the list because they want to send me on a free meal.
Yes. Mr. Howard?
No.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Ms. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Paletti?
No.
Mr. Stradion?
No.
Ms. Paletti?
Yes.
Did not pass.
So, we don't have. Right now, we have no representatives to the Orange County School Board Association. Next item on the agenda is seven point eight. Resolution to appoint Lisbon advocacy liaison for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I have a motion and a second. Second. Right now, we have Mr. Levinstein as a volunteer for Lisbon. Any comments and questions? Votable.
Ms. Paletti?
Yes.
Mr. Bergerini?
Yes.
Mr. Doray?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Lamar?
Yes.
Ms. Levinstein? Ms. Paletti?
Yes.
Mr. Stradion?
Yes.
Yes, that item passed.
We have one item that passes, congratulations. Roles and responsibilities, seven point nine. Ms. Paletti, it has decided to be put on the agenda and has been put on the agenda for leadership team roles. This is coming from the Orange County School Board Association. This is not a creation by the president of the board. School Board, governments, guys and directors under the same power, the superintendent manages, administers, and operates. School Board decides what? And the superintendent decides how it's implemented. School Board requests information. It's very important that we receive information because the school board is an oversight board. Superintendent seeks and provides information. School Board considers the issues while the superintendent provides recommendations. School Board creates, reviews, and adopts policy. The superintendent recommends and carries out the policy. Board approves and reviews plans while the superintendent implements the plans. The school board monitors the progress and we can only monitor. Ms. Paletti?
So, I actually asked for board processes to be added and you changed it to roles and responsibilities. Thank you for that, but I don't think you need to read it all to us. I think we can do that. We don't need a resolution, let's just move the meeting along.
What's the processes that you would like to see, Ms. Paletti?
I spoke about that in my speech already, thank you.
That's heard of, but that's what it is. Accountability, policy three hundred. Board of Education acknowledges that it is directly accountable to the community and has been elected to serve and is committed to engaging in a continuous assessment of all district conditions affecting education. This is a policy that the board has adopted in November twenty-four, two thousand and thirteen. Board recognizes that the comprehensive accountability system is necessary to improve the effectiveness of the district schools by keeping the primary focus on student achievement and on what can be and should be done to improve student achievement. Consistent with its obligations and commitments, the board will request regular reports on student progress and needs. Mr. Shaw? If a report has already been generated by the superintendent's office and a single board member requested, what is the responsibility of superintendent to produce that report?
If it's an unqualified record of the district, which most reports would be, then it should be reviewable by a board member upon request.
If a board member asks a question about a specific item that is a well-known and established knowledge of the superintendent, what is the responsibility of the superintendent to provide any information?
That's going to depend upon the protocols between the board members and the superintendent, how you decide to communicate with each other. And that should be worked out in a productive way so the board members are informed and the superintendent isn't overburdened with requests. There has to be some happy meeting there.
If a board member requests a June graduation rate in August, would the responsibility superintendent be to provide any information or not?
If the graduation rates are available on a document, any board member should be able to access that document. If there is something that requires synthesizing the report, then there ought to be a consensus of the board that would require a report to be created.
Thank you. Any board member have any questions on roles and responsibilities? Mr. Ford?
I'm seeking permission from Mr. Shaw. So, at what point does the embargo from the New York State Education Department come in with graduation rate? Because on a regular basis, that data is not certified until probably late December, maybe early January.
The district should follow whatever the embargo orders are with SED?
Mr. Howard? Yes, so, in line with your questions, Mr. President, to Mr. Shaw. So, a request is made by an individual board member to the central office and it's not something readily available, push a button, print it down, and it takes more work than their task or their job. What is the ruling on that? What's the responsibility of the board member individually? Should that be a collective voice or that one board member?
Okay, I believe there is a board policy and there's also a commissioner's decision that tries to make clear what's given with the EDC and what would require part of the board to direct, to be prepared. So, if it's simply a matter of pressing a button, printing something out, board members would be entitled to whatever an individual could foil, but without having to foil it. So, you have that kind of access to records. But again, if it's a, hey, work project, that's in a bureaucratic way, but it requires work, then it should be the board crime that's going to mandate it.
So, policy twenty-one oh five, third building point, in the absence of a majority vote in the board, a single board member may still request information if he or she can demonstrate that the requested information is relevant to that which the board is in the process of making a determination and under such circumstances, the superintendent and his or her deputy will consult with the board president and determine whether the information will be provided.
I ain't sorry about cutting you off, but I was gonna ask, what are the parameters that determine that? Whether or not it's a full awakening work or for something that's going to take that central office employee awakening, what their work schedule is, provide what they have to do now. So, what is that threshold?
That would usually be within the discretion of the superintendent and if that discretion is challenged, there would be a conversation at the board table. You know, why couldn't it be produced so simply?
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
It would appear to me that I'm being evaluated in public about not giving information to the vice president. Mr. Shaw, am I to assume that this is an evaluation of the requests made by the board vice president which are determined, information such as a graduation rate is not available, it is embargoed, and I need to make sure that I provide accurate information? Is that an evaluation of me on the floor, Mr. Shaw?
I don't know that I would characterize that as an evaluation, but certainly embargoed information is sure due not to reveal that those are written statements from SED, that's the expectation.
I'm gonna move to ask this board of education to allow me to do my job and if you request information from me, there is a rhyme or a reason and because I say no does not mean, I said this before, you move to foil or remove to ask the attorney as a means to intimidate. As the educational leader of this district, please allow me some grace and give me the opportunity to do my work. That's all I'm asking.
Any other questions to the board? That can put us behind. Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources?
Assistant Superintendent Human Resources. Thank you, Mr. President, on the Human Resources agenda. Item eight point one, room eight point one two, we have consideration on tonight. Would any board member like to separate any of the items?
Would separate out eight point one two?
Some hold.
Eight point one two. Any other item? Vocal on items eight point one to eight point one one.
Point one, motion is second for eight point one to eight point one.
Oh, motion is second for eight point one one.
So now I say some hold.
That's it.
Okay.
Second.
Ms. Balai?
Yes.
Mr. Burgarali?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. Levenski?
Yes.
Ms. Paletti?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreider?
Yes.
Item eight point one two.
Who's table side?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second first on tonight.
Motion is second on eight point one two. Second, second. One move, table. Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, yeah. Vocal. The table.
Mr. Burgarali?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. Levenski?
Yes.
Ms. Paletti?
No.
Mrs. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Balai?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my items.
Thank you, Mr. McElroy. Item nine, Assistant Superintendent Finance.
The finance division presents items nine point one to nine point one three for consideration.
Would any board member like to separate any of these items? Do we have a motion and a second?
Some hold.
Second. All right. Vocal, please.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. Levenski?
Yes.
Ms. Paletti?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Balai?
Yes.
Mr. Burgarali?
Yes.
That concludes my items.
Thank you, for Assistant Superintendent CIO DPO.
I have items ten point one to ten point six for consideration.
Would any board member like to separate an item? Ten point four. Ten point four separated. Do I have a motion and a second on ten point one through ten point six minus ten point four?
So second.
Any discussion? Vocal.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Ms. Levenski?
Yes.
Ms. Paletti?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Balai?
Yes.
Mr. Burgarali?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae? Ms. Green?
Ms. Green? Ms. Green?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Item ten point four, can I have a second and a motion?
Hold.
Any discussion on ten point four? Mr. Lamar?
Yeah, I'm just curious, when I looked at the attachment on that, it said that there's two representatives from all of the high schools there and I think both junior, both middle schools, but only from one elementary school. What's the logic behind that?
Um, natural part of the agreement. Item ten point five is the list of professionals who signed up to be a part of the training. So ten point four is the actual agreement with capital regions to provide the training and ten point five is the list of professionals that have signed up for the training. So this training is dependent upon whether or not individuals sign up to want to participate. It's being held in this August, towards the end of August.
Any other questions? Vocal.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. Levenski?
Yes.
Ms. Balai?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Balai?
Yes.
Mr. Burgarali?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Thank you, that concludes my items.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Item eleven is Assistant Superintendent for instructions secondary.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item to consideration this evening, eleven point one.
Can I have a motion and a second on the side?
Some hold.
Second. Any discussion? Vocal.
Mr. Levenski?
Yes.
Ms. Paletti? Mrs. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Balai?
Yes.
Mr. Burgarali?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my items.
Thank you. Item twelve, Assistant Superintendent for exceptional coordinators.
It's not person development, so we have items twelve for your consideration this evening.
Can I have a motion and a second on that?
Thank you.
So any questions? Vocal.
Mrs. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Balai?
Yes.
Mr. Burgarali?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae? Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. Levenski?
Yes.
Ms. Paletti?
Yes.
Item eleven, I have...
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. We go into executive session to obtain legal advice and to get negotiations on the NTA and CSKA. We will not be doing any business at the executive session. Can I have a motion and a second?
Some hold.
Second. Vocal.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes?
Thank you. Have a good night.